We're ready.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the November 13th, 2025 Planning Board Session for the town of Southampton. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
He's here.
He's here.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
And Board Member Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, Gloria. Yes, we have minutes from 10:23. 10:23, we're going to have a motion to approve. Motion by Kate. Second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Post extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
We are up to date on minutes.
Great. Okay, we're going to close this session and go into an exec session, so we will be back.
Just move to go into exec.
Move.
To go into exec.
Motion, yeah. Motion by Tom. Second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Post extensions. Six in favor, one absent.
Kevin? You there?
We're back on.
Okay. So reconvening the November 13th Planning Board meeting. We've done our minutes, we've done the pledge, we've done everything, and now we're going into a work session. So I will close the public hearing and go into the work session for Hidden Cove Marina.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Come on up, have a seat.
I'll grab a chair.
Sure.
I'll sit over here.
You can sit here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you identify yourself?
Sure. My name's Keith Archer.
I'm Ms. Plouvin Archer.
Attorney representing the applicant. To my right is Joe Ialaci, who is the applicant, his entity. And to Joe's right is Chris Turtaglia, our project engineer.
So this application was submitted back last year. It's been incomplete since this date. I brought it to you last week. The applicant didn't have a chance to come to this meeting. So I asked them, in your direction, to come in for a work session. This is an existing marina in a residential district. There's a couple copies of the plan. Do you mind asking this time?
Yeah, I'll take those.
I have three. Do you need more than that?
Okay.
So basically, the application, it's an existing marina. They have boat slips on the property. You can see the aerial. They have some outdoor storage in the interim months. And they have proceeded through some work on property. Notably, the fencing was installed, canopies near the water that makes it a wetlands permit, and then dumpster locations. So we've been back and forth making sure the project is conforming at least from the zoning perspective. There's a lot of public interest in this application.
These changes have not been permitted, question mark?
They have not been permitted?
Yes, in other words...
They conform to the code.
But they did not have a building permit?
No building permits been issued. The canopy may or may not conform to wetlands that would have to have a referral to Marty in conservation to get some feedback on that. But what do I see? This could conform to the code if you consider these changes to the site plan. But I would recommend a public hearing because there's some public interest in this application.
So Claire, just let me clarify the zoning. It's an R-10, right?
It is, yes.
And so was there a special exception or pre-existing non-conforming? What's the status of that zoning clarification?
Pre-existing non-conforming, yes.
Pre-existing non-conforming. And an R-10. It's not RWB, it's not...
No.
No.
Wasn't that code amended, though, to make marinas and boatyards permitted use in R-10?
I think there's a special exception provision, but for pre-existing non-conforming marinas. But I don't think it's a P or an SE, is it?
It is. It's a P.
It's a P for pre-existing non-conforming marinas?
It's a P for... P for permitted. That's all. And I think what happened was that because most of these marinas and boatyards were pre-existing non-conforming, that there was a code amendment. This was a couple... And Tommy John may have been the one that was behind this. You were around at the time, and I think they changed it to permitted uses, provided it was legally existing at the time.
Anything in that code, Anthony?
Yeah, maybe you can zoom in.
Special exception?
I'm gonna look right.
And what in the hell to go through the special exception criteria?
Maybe I'm misreading it. It was previously pre-existing non-conforming because it did get a zoning board approval for fuel storage, which we haven't acted upon and don't intend to.
So it's permitted.
Per-existent.
But though in the code, because we checked into this during a meeting, the definition of boatyard is different from marina.
There are different definitions.
There are different definitions.
Correct.
So this is a marina, even though you have boat storage. It's a boatyard.
It's a boatyard. It conforms to the definition of boatyard.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
What is the definition?
Can we read the definitions, just so that we're all on the same...
Yeah, Anthony, can you pull that up? We looked at that at the meeting.
A boatyard is a facility for servicing all types of watercraft, as well as providing supplies, provisions, storage, and fueling facilities, and facilities for the retail sale of boats, motors, and marine equipment.
Okay. Now...
Marina?
Facility for the birthing and fueling of all types of recreational watercraft. The term marina shall not be deemed to include the term boatyard, or to exclude out-of-water storage, restaurant or repair facilities, fishing stations, or similar activities.
Actually narrower.
It's a much narrower use, marina. Even though you call yourselves the Hidden Cove Marina.
You would think it would be.
You're a hidden cove boatyard.
Right.
Not as sexy.
That Hidden Cove Marina is the prior name. The current name is Yacht Hampton Boating Center. That's the current name. Prior approval was Hidden Cove Marina. That's the prior owner.
Are you doing the retail sales there?
Retail sales?
Boat rental goods?
It's boat rentals, basically, and charter rentals.
And renting of slips. Prior to me, they did retail sales there. So I actually went down in my scope of things. They used to have a retail store there, and there's pictures, it used to actually have a restaurant inside. It was like a Flo's Diner. I have pictures here from the 50s. And actually, another picture with a huge dock for like a 50-foot boat. So this, you know, there's a lot of history with this, and I did a lot of homework when I looked at buying this marina. And I based my decision on the C of O, which is very strong from the 50s. That said they had 50 boats with engines there. So now I only have 20 boats. The prior owner had 50.
And what is, when you say charter? Can you talk about that a little bit to us?
Sure, it would be multi-gen, like, most of the time, it's more like a multi-generational fun thing to do, where they would rent a boat with my professional captains driving. They're licensed, and it's very controlled and professional. And I get a lot of, probably one of the secret sauces to my business, is that they're professional and people like the safety of it, with an impeccable safety record. Whereas before, I'm sorry, before, they used to rent just to anyone. A gentleman from Brooklyn could come out and just get in a boat and drive, and they had 50 of them. So in my opinion, it's actually less and more safe.
These are boats that are kept in your slips?
Yes. I have three locations, plus Florida.
No, I know, but the charter boats from the site are ones that are kept in your slips?
Indeed.
And you're fueling them onsite?
Not.
You said you had a fuel?
We had approval. Yeah, there was a fuel permit approved back in 2012, actually, to do fueling there. And when I bought the marina, I bought it under the pretense of doing fueling. And Mr. Tottaglia actually won that approval with the zoning Board of Appeals, right? And I looked at that when I made the decision to invest $7 million in this marina. I thought, wow, I could have, when I got the loan, it was like, wow, I could make some of my payment back by doing fuel. But then, after the public outcry and a couple neighbors, and one in particular was a nice gentleman, she stopped over and he said, Joe, I like you. He actually brought me lunch, and he said, Joe, if you get fuel, I'm not gonna lie. I'm gonna protest, I don't want you to have fuel here. So at that moment, I looked him in the eye, shook his hand, and said, great, we have a deal, no fuel.
So is it a boatyard or a marina? Because you're saying boatyard, you're saying marina.
It's just generic marina. Technically, under the zoning regulations, it's a boatyard. And that's what the C of O, basically.
But a boatyard without fuel.
What are the size of these charter boats?
Anything from 16 feet to 57 feet.
And how many people are on a 57-foot boat?
No more, the legal limit is 13.
13 people?
Yeah.
And where's the parking for these charters?
They would be in front of the building, right there, where those boats are, and then?
Is that all parking now?
Yeah, that's, all parking.
So you took away the boats?
Yes.
The boats are in the water in the summer.
That's the winter time, yeah.
They're not up on land.
So that's current, that's how it looks today, because all the boats are out of the water. But in the season, that's all parking, and then in the back, in the closer to the water, that's all parking. Except behind those, by the waterfront, there's a safe place for the grandparents and the little kids to congregate before they go on these boats. So it's a nice waiting area.
So that's the area where you have the canopy put up?
Correct, and have nice pictures, it's well-done, tastefully done, very safe.
So you keep the 57-foot boats on?
That would be on one of those docks, either straight, the middle one, straight out, if you go to the end. Left of that, of the mouse. Yeah, the middle one there, little left, down. Yep, there, or along that other dock. If you go down one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
And how many of those do you have?
20 there. I own 28, but I keep, actually, 17 there.
And how many of the bigger boats do you have?
There, I have a 57, a 52, and a 3. And then a, yeah, 57, 52, and then 36 would be my next big one.
So the third pair down, the single pair going out?
Yes.
Is that your property too? Or is that, because it actually lines up with this, with the adjacent property, so it's kind of?
Yeah, smart question. That used to be, I believe, part of the marina. And years ago, they sold that sliver of land with the water access.
Okay. I got it. So the charter boat operation created some community unrest?
Correct.
I don't believe there were charter boats ever out of this.
No, it was worse, actually, it was rentals. It was a free-for-all, you could just rent any boat and go.
But were there 57-foot, 52-foot boats?
No, they were smaller boats, correct.
All right, so you've got larger boats?
So it's, yeah, so fifty small, yeah, 50 small, or, you know, 15 big. What would you rather have? 15 people with radios, 15 people unqualified blasting music?
What do you do for pump-out?
I bring it to a place in Salt, Shelter Island. And then the wonderful worker from the trustees comes every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, are on busy days.
If I can just make a note on that, too, just sorry to interrupt, but so the original plans filed with the town, we were also proposing an onsite lav pump-out system, and we omitted that as well. Based on some commentary from planning and concerns of over-intensification of the use, we've worked with Joe to de-intensify the use and just turn the temperature down. So that was one of the things we omitted.
So when you charter a boat, you're chartering it to one person, and they are inviting or selling tickets or whatever to other people?
Ninety percent correct, without the tickets. It's generally like a grand, it's a 50-year-old with the grandfather and the grandchildren, and that's most of my client base. But it would be one, we call it a primary, who signs the contract, and they bring their family and friends. There was bad press about a booze cruise situation, and that was utterly false. It's not, I don't, I have one boat that has 49 passengers, and that boat runs out of East Hampton. And they love it there, and it's fine, and it stays there generally. Because I heard in the last minute, someone to booze cruise, and I said, oh no, it's that article coming up again. And it was a fake art, it was a false article.
But you're not putting the groups together?
No, no, and it's not by ticket. It's usually a classy family spending between, my pricing is as follows. It's between $2,000 and $10,000 for four hours. So this isn't like 23-year-old children, you know, people, you know, boozing it up. These are generally wealthy affluent families, a who's who, if you will.
And the trustees have some say over this dock area, is my understanding? There's some involvement with the town trustees?
Yeah.
Can you maybe tell us a little about your interactions with the town trustees?
Sure, we've had great communication, talked openly to them. And, yeah, they said there was no, there's no jurisdiction to put whether it's a small boat or a large boat. And they've been getting hounded by neighbors, a handful of neighbors, mind you. Not many, I have more compliments than people that, you know, detractors. But I think there's maybe two or three loud detractors that are making this bigger than it really is.
We've had many more of your neighbors writing in opposition.
Okay, well, I've asked to meet with them and speak, but no one seems to want to.
So do you, let's get back to parking, because parking is always a major issue. This is a very small community, and you are in a residential zone. Give us a scenario in the summer, when that parking lot is packed, what happens?
Yeah, thank you. The days that if you drove by my marina, when you think of it, just know, Monday through Thursday, quiet. Busy, Fridays marginal, Saturday, very busy. So on Saturday, I'm always there, I'm an active owner. The prior owner, they called it Hidden Owners Marina, he was never there. So I'm active, I'm at my desk, you come in every day in the summer, I'm there. So I have two shifts, and these are great questions, thank you for asking. I have 10:00 to 2:00, and 2:30 to 6:30. And that's by design, because these boats are expensive, brand-new, high-end, so they need to go out twice a day. So I have two shifts, 10:30 to 2, 10:00 to 2, and 2:30 to 6:30. From 2:00 to 3:00, it's witching hour, I call it. You're welcome to come by. I even told a couple neighbors, I was stodgy and negative towards them, I said, please, come between 2:00 and 3:00. It's when I'm at my worst, and I invited them to. And from 2:00 to 3:00, I get off my desk, I go out in the street, and I tell, come park, I double park, or park where they need to be. And I make it work, and it works. And if you look, when you say parking's an issue, I have neighbors that are watching me like a hawk. In two years, I've gotten two pictures. So trust me, if parking was a problem on the street, you'd be getting pictures. I welcome them to send you pictures, I control that parking lot.
So what's the maximum, do we have a maximum number of parking spaces in that lot?
I don't have a number.
Yeah, we would want that.
Sort of answered that, excuse me. So what we've delineated on the site plan here is 25 stalls. And the number really, that came from the prior site plan approval that Joe mentioned, that I handled in 2012. That was what was approved on the prior, under the prior application. But just pointing at the plan, so that, the parking stalls are located here, fronting the building, and on either side of the curb cut, here and here. So that encompasses a total of, let's see, we have 15 in the front, and then there's 10 more in the back. Now, what I haven't added, and again, I just went to 25 because that's what was approved, but there's additional area from here towards the dock, and along this area here that Joe was talking about, where is the safe haven for the customers to disembark and wait for their boats?
Where's the wetlands line?
The bulkhead?
The bulkhead is the wetlands line. So this is not in the wetlands. The wetlands is outside of the bulkhead, that was flagged by Marty Shay several times.
So I don't know the calculation for, I mean, we certainly know it, parking calculations for regular site plans, but how is, I wonder how it's figured for a boatyard, when you have, you have as many as 57 people and many cars?
I think it's by boat slip.
By boat slip? So how many slips do you have?
So the code reads one and a half stalls per boat slip, times 26 slips. So the actual calculation comes out to one and a half times 26, plus one per employee, and we have at any given time, three employees.
That's about 39.
So the total is about 42 in total that are required. So again, we provided the 25, just because it was part of the prior site plan approval. But as Joe indicates, when he's out there directing traffic, we can fit way more than 42 on the property, though I don't know that you ever get that volume, do you, Joe, in terms of total parking?
One or two fundraisers that had about 45 cars there, max.
All on the property?
Yes.
Double parked, maybe triple parked, but that's okay, because you're controlling them. It's not like a retail use where people need to come and go. They're all coming and going, basically, at your, at your direction.
Correct, and then when they leave at 2:00, a new batch comes at 2:20, so. And if someone wanted to check the town records, I think there was one ticket, just this year. I was like, damn, I got one, one parking ticket in three years.
Parking on the street?
Yeah, correct. And they were just being, someone making a stupid, silly mistake, shouldn't have done that, they were just lazy. And I was mad at them for doing so. But I'm very, I do police my lot, more than anyone.
So you've got a lot for 25, and then some additional, so you're really under the parking calculation by code?
No, no, not at all. What I said was, we delineated 25, because that's what was shown on the prior approved site plan, which is, I thought, the standard we'd be held to by the board. However, if the board wanted to see how many vehicles we could actually fit on the property, it'd be well over 50. And with, against 42 required.
Seemed like a safety issue for me. Well, I sort of, I question the overlap time, because how often do the boats get back? And everybody's gone before the next group comes? My guess is that almost never happens, because people get there early.
Yeah.
And especially if they're not real local, with traffic?
Yeah.
So how do you handle when you've got all your boats booked that day, for both morning and afternoon? What do you do?
Good question. I get off, get off my desk, get off my seat, and we'll go. And I make it work, and I stagger. When I know it's a busy day, what I do is, I stagger the times. I say, you could start at 9:30, and for free, I incentivize them. I say, you could, I call them a couple days before, when I know it's a busy manic day. I say, can you, you can start at 9:30 on me. So they start at 9:30, and then they finish early sometimes, and then it works better. But, and then I do do 12 to 8, you know, it's not, it's wonderful, I've been staggering more and more, and it's a wonderful device, I like using. So I'm getting better at it. And just so you, I think if you look at the history of the complaints about the property, let me add, the first year, I closed on June 6th. So picture, it was, I was very proud of my effort, I closed on June 6th, and I was able to operate. But that's, you have to do a lot of preparation for this. So at June 6th, and I inherited two tenants, and that was the problem. The first year, I had issues with the neighbors was more egregious issues. And the one gentleman, I got the cops there multiple times, and I inherited him with my loan, you know, my loan and my paperwork, all the closing. And then, once he left, it became a lot better. So that's why I think you would see the complaints have gone down over the years.
So I guess I'm just having a hard time saying how you could manage if I've got 20 cars, or 25 cars, in the parking lot, and there's 20 waiting on the street to come in?
Oh, it's never that much.
And, and how do you, how do you get rid of the ones that are there, when they're still out on the boat?
There's enough spots for them, generally, that, you know, maybe the first 10, oh, fine. And then the rest, once or twice, on July 3rd, I won't lie to you, I'd have to walk out by that ramp, and then say, I don't know if you see the ramp there?
That's the town ramp.
The town ramp, and I would have to stop and say, wait for Mr. Jones to leave. And in all due respect, takes about 10 minutes, and then he would leave, and then pull in. But that's only once, once or twice.
Well, it seems to me that there is an impact on that small community. I don't know the classification of that road, Pine Nick, but I'm sure it's not a collector road?
It's a town road, no, it's a residential.
It's a small residential road. And there's impact there, when you've got 25 cars leaving, 25 cars coming in. It's, it's the number here, you know, the quantity. It's different when you have a small boat individually owned, and one or two people come for a boat, but you're talking, how many people in a 57-foot boat?
No, no, 12, yeah, I want to correct that. It's, I would have 17 boats that I own at my marina.
Small boats?
Very, a couple big, 17 total. 17 total, of which three are electric, which is a good thing. So that's, that's a new thing that I'm trying to lead the industry in, actually. But out of that, that leaves, and those don't go out much sadly, to my detriment. I invested in electric boats, and they don't sell a lot. But I wanted to give the appearance, and just be a good person, and try to do that, and lead the charge. I were a little bit ahead of before its time. But, so that leaves us with, those three don't go out much, so that leaves us with 14 boats. And each boat, again, the max on my boats at my marina, are 12 to 13. And that's not every boat, that's, my average is like 5.7 people per boat. You get a lot of romantic couples that go out, you get proposals, you get weddings at sea, where two people want to go, gonna get engaged, rather, a lot of proposals, and things like this. So it's not all parties and 13 people, that's the max.
So the purpose of a work session, which are always good, particularly with a project like this, is to go away with some recommendations from the board. So I certainly would say that I think you need to show a much more defined parking calculation here. Both the front lot and, and the lot facing the water. And, and some kind of traffic control here. I don't know how you do that, but?
I think also a recent determination from the building, the chief building inspector, about the use, because I think it says, "Welcome to Yacht Hampton Boating Club." Is a boating club a boatyard or a marina? There's discussion about that today, the chief building inspector needs to provide that.
Determination.
Determination, along with the application, so we can consider it.
Madam Chair, may I just, may I suggest, and Joe as well, if we could talk about, because the issue is, the cars are generated when your charters are generated. So, and you talked about a worst-case scenario. Maybe I think, perhaps this might be a good idea, if we talk about a July 4th weekend, which sounds like it's your worst
Yes.
case, why don't we look into your records of what you've sold, and how many people have attended? And we can provide records, perhaps, of that, or at least provide an analysis of how many people that is, and then try to satisfy the board and the neighbors on how we're parking all of those cars, and where those folks are parking, and when they're coming, and provide a schedule throughout that day?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are code regulations for fire lanes, handicap parking. All of that has to be accommodated in your parking calculation, just can't jam in 25 cars, you know, bumper to bumper. It just doesn't work, I mean?
And it's all based on the use that's determined, right? And the calculations go from there. It's not just our summation of what we think will be the right thing. It has to be determined by the use, whether it's allowable there, and you know all this.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting, why don't we use real-world data? He's been there for two and a half years now, he's got real-world charter data. Why don't we provide that, and can give you a real-world feel of?
And one thing I have done, and I'm proud of it actually, I've went on like, um, my second busiest day, Labor Day, Saturday obviously is, and Sunday. And I've video, I could supply the footage. I, I've, I've walked through my parking lot. And literally you hear birds chirp because we're a well-oiled machine and I do it well now. And you hear the birds chirp. I even have commentary to that point. And you could see my parking lot at my worst. And then it's, it's not as bad as one would see. And trust me, there'd be more tickets if parking out in the street was an issue, you'd have a bunch more tickets.
Well, anything more that we should add to this? George, did you have something?
I, I would like to get some feedback from the trustees themselves as to what their assessment of this situation is. I know, I've talked to the trustees and I know they've had multiple conversations with you folks and I'd like to get their.
Maybe we could ask them to give us an opinion on what they're seeing because they are, they are neighbors. Buddying neighbors.
Okay. Um, so I heard that define the parking, um, the traffic. This, I guess more like a written form of how traffic is being controlled, right? And then, um, referral to the chief building inspector regarding the use and a referral to the trustees. Again, we lead it to the use, so the operation of the boatyard.
Right, right. And the, you know, that is, as Jackie put, that's a town boat ramp. Make sure, you know, there isn't encroachment on, you know, other members of the public wanting to use that boat ramp.
And so the, the, that other single pier that goes into the water that George commented is on the other property? Is that, that is yours, right?
Yes, that's mine, correct.
Okay. Do you have a
The property line.
An agreement with that property owner for that?
Yeah, she owned the property. There's a sliver of.
Yeah, Jackie, it's almost like a flag strip.
There's a little sliver here which this property was sold, which is unbelievable that he sold that.
He sold it off, I guess.
So you don't use that second long pier?
Uh, one on the bottom, no.
The one on the bottom.
The bottom, the most bottom one, I do not.
Yeah, that one.
That one I do use.
And you have an arrangement with them?
No, he owns it.
Oh, you all know, you own that strip.
No, I have dialogue with the son and if he doesn't like something, it's wonderful. He calls me and he'll tell you. Call him if you want to. And here, let me just add this. This is my neighbor. If you, anyone.
To the north.
To the north. Beautiful seven million dollar home. They wrote a letter actually advocating for me. So when the narrative is there's neighbors, many neighbors, I think the, the number one person we should be talking to are the neighbors that are next to me and right there, not the, the person that comes up at all the New York Civic Council, lives nine doors down. And the, sorry, I misspoke. Seven is one and the other gentleman who always comes up and is very vocal is eleven. If I was so bad, this guy would not bring me fresh tuna and a glass of wine at my desk. And he's done that.
So we'll have a public, there'll be a public hearing, so they'll have an opportunity.
You'll find a handful, but there'll be, you know, the narrative should change in all due respect.
Do you have any questions of us?
No, but I just wanted to point out something, and that is the, the town's dock, Joe doesn't use that at all.
Okay. And the operation doesn't block that in any way?
No, I, I have a, a sliver there. And what, actually, once a neighbor commented and she said the gentleman complained, but guess what? The, the gentleman who was blocked for three minutes bought me a case of Perrier. So she, they lied actually about it. And at that moment, I ceased all dialogue with the neighbors that there's one group that was very vocal, the concerned residents of Pine Nick. And they lost all credibility when they said that he complained that I blocked the drive. And the one gentleman that come here, his name's Joe, he actually bought me a case of Perrier because I've been nice to him.
We just want to make sure the public has access to launch their most.
I've actually added water for the neighbors. There, and I get thanked a lot. You know, I added water to the, um, ramp. So people, when they bring their boat out to add value to the neighborhood, they could hose their boat down.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm closing out the work session and going back into the regular session and, um.
I'll figure it out.
You'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So Teresa, we're doing the Kajowski Family Farm, number two.
Good afternoon. As you may remember, this is the subdivision near the Lewis Road subdivision that's just currently pending. It's agricultural lots. And, um, we had initially taken deed to two, escrow for two of the properties for the road improvements. But now the properties were sold as a group to a new owner and the new owner posted performance bond. That performance bond is expiring, so this is an extension of the performance bond.
To a particular date, Teresa?
Uh, I think it's a year.
For one year? Any questions? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor and one absent. Anthony Sagvine, number three.
I think this resolution is longer than it needs to be. So the board will remember, this was, um, this is a CPF subdivision. Uh, this is a five acre piece, uh, right at the end of Middle Line Highway here. It's got a cell tower on there. You might recall.
Could you just tell us the funky?
Yeah, that's strange, yeah.
The zoning board granted the relief, um, last week. Just so the board understands, when we do these, because the town code accounts for a two lot subdivision waiving everything for a CPF purchase, the code says for a conforming lot or a relief had to be granted by the zoning board of appeals, so.
Because of the shape?
Yeah.
So the relief makes it conform.
You know, and you will see Jackie had submitted to this board.
Jackie Fenlin.
Jackie Fenlin. Um, there's a covenant that's required that they can't put any residence or any other use on the property, actually. Um, and that in the event the cell tower use goes away, the town gets right of first offer. My guess is ultimately all of this is just going to be preserved at some point. But there's going to be no residential uses there, so. So I gave you a resolution here. Technically, I don't, on these, I don't know why I referred it to the engineer and the fire marshal, but I did. So you'll see, um, on page two, there were some comments from the engineer. Nothing really particularly crazy that we need to worry about. Like he talked about the twenty-foot access strip, uh, but it's existing. There's already an existing easement there. So it's okay. Um, I spoke to Jackie. They talked about a split rail fence. Jackie would prefer not to have a split rail fence. Just because, uh, she likes the openness and didn't think it was necessary in this case. I mean, there's a typo on the map, not a big deal. Just with respect, if you look at page three, number six.
May I just comment, Middle Line Highway is a private road?
I think portions of it maybe, yeah.
This portion is. Well, we'll look into that and make sure that it's a proper.
I mean, I.
It's not on your GIS?
Can, Carl, can you give us your name for the record, please?
Sure. Carl Benacasa, eight sixteen Montauk Highway, Watermelon, New York, for the applicant.
That was a private road thirty years ago, but.
Well, whatever it is, we'll check it and we'll update the map.
We'll look into it. Doesn't look like it's improved to town specs, that's for sure, on this portion here.
The town just repaved it and striped it.
Oh, did they? Okay, I'm, I'm just looking at.
Yeah, I mean.
But we have to find out if it's public or not. So beyond that, I sent it to the fire district, the fire marshal. They didn't have anything specific and nothing from trails. You might recall, we actually already have the Pominock Trail that comes through the corner. This is what we created a previous subdivision to capture that trail, so.
You want to talk about the wood chips, just to.
Oh, yeah. And if you look at the top of page three, they, they mentioned, or Tom mentioned wood chips. I spoke to Jackie about wood chips as well. She said, um, anything that needed to be cleaned up was cleaned up by the applicant already. And anything else sitting in there, some wood chips could remain and disintegrate into the earth. So she didn't seem to have any issues. They seemed to be anxious to get this wrapped up before the end of the year, so. Really, there's nothing else. If you just go to.
Whereas?
Yeah, page four. The findings. Uh, there are no more than two lots being created. Jackie Fenlin has indicated that the second lot will be acquired through the Community Preservation Fund.
I think we have to include in here that when the use is no longer, uh, as it is for Teltor, it reverts back and the town has first right of refusal.
So then what we'll do is on these findings, Jackie, one, two, and three, uh, three, if you look, is actually just the date of the variance application. I have to get the decision number. Uh, yeah, because I don't have the decision number. We will add, Jackie, the covenants and restrictions that are being imposed by the town. That would be number four. And number five will be the right of first offer in the event the use is.
Okay, that's, that clarifies it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The next whereas, based upon the above, the planning board finds that the request meets the criteria for the waiver pursuant to two ninety-two forty-four. And be resolved, the planning board hereby waives a subdivision review for the application of Sagvine Properties LLC, subject to the submission of maps for signature and filing indicating town open space parcel.
Any, any questions? No? Okay, Carl, any comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion, motion to approve by Gloria, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Carl. Okay, Teresa, number four, Thirty-One Bridge Covenant Amendment.
So, uh, this is a request by the applicant to eliminate a covenant requiring a special taxing district, which is generally required for private roads. However, the history of this is that this Bridgehampton Road racist subdivision came through and was approved. And the original subdivision required the establishment of a homeowners association to maintain and, uh, the existing private roads. However, when the applicant came in to do the initial site plan for the dwelling as required by the subdivisions, the site plan said you have to create this special taxing district for the maintenance of the private road if it ever gets taken in by the town. So those two covenants conflict. So they're asking to eliminate the, um, the special taxing district requirement because there is a homeowners association in existence that has control over those roads. Um, I had spoken with the town attorney and she said that should be okay, provided that there's some kind of covenant. The covenant language includes, uh, language that says in the event that the HOA ceases to exist, there will be some mechanism for that road to be maintained. The draft covenant has been submitted to Christine. Once she signs off on it, they can file it with the clerk's office and they'll give us a copy. And that's what the, uh, resolution calls for.
That's it, the one page?
Just the one page. Oh, and there are attorneys here if you need any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, a motion to, uh, to approve.
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions.
I'll take that one.
In favor, one absent.
You move the second.
Thank you.
Prerna Prime Storage, number five. This is the interior. Can we have your name for the record?
Joe Nitzel, architects for the applicant.
NEI.
NEI. TZ.
This is, uh, Prime Storage located at two twenty-nine Betterland Bridgehampton. It's an existing storage facility that was approved, um.
This, that go into the two stories?
Yeah, the, the. So it's previously approved, uh, site plan approval in ninety-six and ninety-seven for the, uh, the building in the front. The large building is a warehouse storage and then the four buildings behind it are self-service storage or self, self-storage. The proposal is to convert that large warehouse building into self-storage as well as add that second deck. So essentially doubling the interior footprint. The other, uh, change, I believe, is the only other exterior or the only other change is the filling in and removal of the loading racks, which is on the north side of that building. Everything, as I understand it, is up here within the structure and they're not proposing to change the building envelope.
It's tall, it's tall enough that they could put a second.
Correct, yeah. And I think you did, I think they did that on the buildings in the back.
We're adding a second floor within the existing building itself. I think now it's like twenty-three feet to the roof rafters and we're cutting that in half.
Um, apart from that, there are no other exterior changes with the landscape or architecture or lighting or anything like that signage.
And parking?
Parking, so although they're doubling the footprint, the parking requirement is halved when it goes from warehouse to self-storage. So instead of one space per every thousand, it becomes one space for every two thousand. So the parking requirement stays the same. Um, and I have the numbers in here as well. It is a special exception use, the self-storage, so that's why they're before you today. And then I have, this is a draft, uh, pre-submission conference report. They have a conference in September, I think it was September twenty-fifth. So there were no comments, public comment received at all. And I have the review items on page two of the report. That's like the, uh, the use of special exception. They'll, they'll be required to submit, um, the, the petitions for compliance with the general standards and the specific standards. I, I briefly looked, uh, through all of that and it seems to comply. There, um, regarding outdoor storage, there's no outdoor storage proposed on the plan. There are some storage pods along the southern side of the building that look, that are taking up required parking spaces, which is not allowed and potentially renting, um, for cars. And there's a boat storage here. So the, the code allows for any recreational vehicles, but it has to be beyond what the required parking is. You were mentioning that those were there temporarily.
Yeah, so those portable white units you see in the photo are like pods, like you would rent and they would drop off. But as part of this, they're going to remove those once we convert the building for those tenants that are in there.
So you'll have the storage inside?
Correct.
And they provided, uh, interior floor plans that show what they're proposing. So these are all the different.
Size storage units.
For the first floor and the second floor. There's also an existing, uh, office space on the main floor that's to remain as well.
Are there any changes that have to be made to the heating or cooling?
We will, yeah. We'll be providing new cooling. Right now it's got radiant heat in the floor. We're going to be supplementing that with new air conditioning units. They won't be roof mounted. They'll be on the, on the site and screened. So if we get to our next phase for the formal site plan submission, we'll show that with the, uh, locations where those will be. They'll be on the south side of the building. They won't be on the north facing the street.
Other, the, the units?
Yeah.
You're doing an elevator in there?
There will be a new elevator. And that office currently there is for the self-storage use at the rear, so it's not for the warehouse itself. So that's going to remain.
The parking is met, uh, you know, like I said, it's doubled, but it's halved at the same time. They may or may not be overparked. We'll take a look at that a little closer when we get to the final. I do note that there, they have thirty-three parking spaces around the existing structures at the deck that are presented as land banked. And as a code, you can only land bank a third. So the recommendation would be to either covenant that third and paint the remainder or just paint all of them in. There, there, it's, you could see them here a little bit better. They're just parking stalls that.
They're between the drive aisles of those existing buildings.
Yeah, they're adjacent to the building, which is a, which is a requirement.
Will we see them? Will we see there, those cars? No?
No, not the cars along the buil, the, are you talking about the spaces along the larger building?
Mm-hmm.
No, there are spaces that are dedicated for the units at the back.
Right.
So there's an option there to either stripe them all in or covenant the third. Because right now it's thirty-three is more than a third of the fifty-four that are allowed or.
There's so much of hard surface between, among those buildings and the, and the parking lots.
Say it again?
It's so much hard surface. It, it hurts.
Yeah, I don't know if there's much we could do about that now.
I mean, I see some trees around the outside, but.
That's why, it's, it is, the, the perimeter is well landscaped. They have really nice trees on this side. It's all, uh, it's all per the approval that they did in the nineties.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Are you getting, are you getting less dust from the adjoining parcel?
At this point, we are, yeah. It's starting. At this point we are, yeah, it's starting to, you know, not be as much construction and getting finished, so.
It's a type one action pursuant to secret because of the number of parking spaces existing and proposed. So we'll have to do it coordinated when the time comes. And they are in the archaeological sensitive areas, however, they're not proposing any additional ground disturbance. So I don't know that, I don't think.
It looks pretty disturbed.
Yeah.
Already done.
Same thing with the APOD, it was all pre-disturbed prior to zoning and continued to be so. They're exempt pursuant to the code. The use complies with the master plan and again, the architecture, it's all metal, but the architecture, landscape, lighting, signage, as proposed, it's all existing to remain. So unless they change anything, you know, the board will review that later when the site plan comes in. For sustainability, I put in the board's general recommendation to incorporate green elements. They do have eight solar panels on one of those southern buildings there already. And everything else during agent sanitary, if it applies, should be reviewed by the town engineer. Mechanicals to be screened or blocked and no public address.
Is there a gate to get in here?
So right now, there is a gate. So currently the front building is opened and accessible to the public. There's a gate that runs currently along the south side, yep, exactly, right there. Along the south side of the warehouse, that's going to remain. So that controls access to the self-storage portion of the site. And based on our new floor plans, all the loading for that warehouse that we're converting is from the south side. So you'll still have to come through that gate in order to load everybody's product into that building.
Will it keep, is it keypad gate or?
Yeah, you type in a code and then it opens up. The one on the right is not a keypad. That one is a manual accessible gate. That's more, I guess, for fire access. But the primary one on the west side of the plan is a key code.
Do we have a fire report on this from the fire commissioners?
There are no referrals yet. We'll do that all at the completeness of the final.
Yes, it's just draft.
It's submission, so we.
No changes to the sanitary system, no?
We will have to go to health department just to update the square footage. But with mini-stores, there's covenants and restrictions that you file on the property. So there's no plan to change the sanitary system. We just need to update the CNRs for the revised square footage. It's actually a reduction in flow based on the requirements because that's warehouse and we're going to storage. But we still just need to update that.
So there's obviously a bathroom in there.
Correct, yep. Two bathrooms. Single occupant.
All on the first floor.
Correct.
Signage, I think you have a sign.
We're not touching it, but it's ever there now.
You're leaving it there. It's down by the road.
Is the building sign, is there a sign out by the road as well? A wall sign there.
There was a comment on a loading stall too. I mean, we can provide that if necessary.
For parking, if you want, if the board wants to include a truckload parking space. I mean, before it was warehouse, so maybe it made sense. There weren't any truck loading spaces prior to this. But now that it's going to self-storage, maybe, I don't know if you'd still want that. People typically pull up with their U-Hauls, so I'm not really sure if they would need a dedicated space to park because they just pull up alongside.
So where would that be?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, they'd have to create it. I don't know if the board would require it.
These are each outward facing garage door type.
So in this, the facility currently at the rear has some outdoor garage units. This is all internal. So you're going to go through a door and you're going to access all the units internally.
Inside, okay. So they are, so a loading, a truck loading spot.
We could put one next to the primary loading area if that's recommended by the board. That's not an issue.
This is the primary loading to the south?
Yep.
And all of these doors become useless now?
Yes.
How would they get all their stuff to the storage unit?
There's hallways inside the building, so you're going to come in one of the, the primary loading areas. So you'll unload your stuff outside, walk through the existing overhead garage door, and then you'll just go down the hallway to get to your unit.
So do you have to provide your own mechanism to get your stuff there or?
They provide like push carts like you would see in like Home Depot, like a flat cart. They provide five or six of them in the, in the main loading area.
Okay, you've covered all the points.
Probably somewhere over here. We could make one.
The depths, maybe. Just consider the depths, yeah.
That's all I have, okay. Any more questions? This is just a draft, so.
Yeah, we're actually under action deadline. This is the draft pre-submission report.
And so next week you're to find, no?
We were, so.
December?
This, today is the action deadline.
So we need an extension?
Unless you don't want to, if you don't want to adopt it, we would need, I think, an endorsement from the applicant. Or, because if I had this on last time, we could adopt it.
I mean, I think, do we have, it seems okay, seems pretty straightforward. Anybody?
I'll move.
Okay, motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Post extensions, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Claire, are you ready with Louis Road?
So Louis Road is the consideration for the amendment to both the site plan condition and the subdivision covenants to change the timing for the construction of the CO for the work, 12 workforce units. Originally tied to the site plan was 30, they were permitted up to 30 units. And the same for the subdivision. The request before you is to amend the both of those, the site plan and subdivision, to permit up to 30 of 59 units, which would be half of the units. The 30 represented about a fourth. It was a fourth of the 118 residential units on the property. So.
What you didn't say is that the workforce housing had to be built once 30 COs were established. And the question is before us now to change that number to allow a longer period of time before the workforce units get built per the site plan. So it's still 12, 12 units in the building that is on the site plan.
Correct, 12 units.
So we're just simply looking at the amendment to the covenant of the COs. Can I have your names for the record, please?
Hi Jackie, Jessica and Solaco from Discovery Land.
And Wayne Bruin, we know. So Claire, you have some language that you want to?
Yeah, I had passed it out to you, so you have a copy of it. Staff is recommending that you do honor their request, knowing that, you know, things change in any site plan, things aren't all perfect for any person. So understanding that they may need some additional time, but we also recommend that, this is very important. Building the workforce housing is a critical part of this project. The state felt strongly about it, passed regulations. The town feels strongly about it, passed regulations.
And this is really part of the secret determination that this is going to be mitigation to the, the overall application.
So staff is recommending something in between, which is, we're recommending a third, which would be, translate to approx, it would be 39, 38 units being permitted and prior to the 39th units being issued of permits. The workforce housing would have been, have a CO.
So instead of a quarter, the applicant was requesting half. And we're recommending a third as a.
I'm recommending a third, which is the board's consideration.
As a in-between.
Right, and I've been prepared to present to you a resolution that would adopt both of those. We could do it one resolution, but there are obviously two actions. We could split them up into two actions also. But it would rate, there would be similarly, I have language for both.
What, for site plan and?
One was the site plan condition and then one was the subdivision covenants.
Okay.
Yes.
I think we've talked about this a lot, Wayne, yes?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Sure, sure. The board may recall that the purpose of this is because, among other things, we have already received and as of today, we have 45 building permits with construction on 45 dwelling units. And so obviously to get a CO for the 31st through the 45th, we would need to have the CO for the affordable housing, the 12-unit building. And the whole purpose of this is not because we're trying to delay something, but we've been in discussions with the town and not specifically any particular alternative. But the question is, is we see a need to have other affordable housing units, additional workforce housing units. And for, to give us time to vet that with this board and if necessary, get the required permits in place. Because we would need your board, Pine Barrens, Health Department, all nine yards, would take time. The construction of the workforce housing, if we started today, would take 18 months. We're in a position right now for about a half a dozen COs today. We expect more by the end of the year. We expect probably to be in a position to be at our 30th somewhere and at the end of next summer. So even if we started the workforce housing today, we're not going to be, wouldn't be able to have that finished and we'd be sitting with houses totally complete and without a CO. Part of the issue that you just described would leave us hanging, if you're doing 38 or 39, is we have 45 right now. There'll be six that will have to choose if this hasn't been, you know, completed, if we haven't had that time. So the number 59, if you went back in the record, we submitted a letter in June and one of the suggestions there was not to tie the completion of this to COs, but just some other alternative such as a time, like other performance issues. This board, you got to finish the public improvements by a certain time. Of course, there's a guarantee, a bond, not suggesting a bond. But there was some sort of performance date as opposed to tying it to COs. We were told that that's probably not the way to go and, and the suggestion came back to us to suggest 59 units. We didn't look at our project and say 59 was the magic number. So we're flexible on that number. But I think at this point, to go to 39 when we have 45 building permits could put us in a position that we got to make choices, which could mean that we have no choice, no more alternatives that we're going to be able to explore, you know. So that's what the basis for the flexibility was. So if there's any kind of flexibility, maybe it should be tied to the, at least the building permits we haven't already under construction.
Building permits for residential units?
Residential units, correct.
And the, so that, well, how many building permits do you have outstanding for the non-residential unit?
I don't know. That, yeah, that wouldn't, this is tied to COs for the residential units, yeah. I mean, we have all of the clubhouse and everything else is all in the works. But the COs were tied to the residential units.
And how many COs are in existence right now for the residential units?
Zero.
None.
They haven't.
And how long have you had these? When did you have your first permit for a residential structure?
Probably a year, a year and a half ago, maybe 14, 16 months. So we're ready. I mean, we know there's a couple units, six, about six units.
You have 45, many of those have not, you probably haven't started construction yet.
Oh, no.
So.
The 45 have started construction.
You have your building permit for the 12-unit affordable?
We have the building permit. That's been on hold for a year now.
So you can break ground for the affordable housing tomorrow?
We could do that tomorrow, yeah.
So, I mean, I think what you're hearing is that the board, in terms of a reasonable extension of one-third, we want to pin it to that for 39 units and that we would have to amend the covenant for that. And then we need a new, what else will we do with the site plan? So we need two resolutions, right?
You could do it as two resolutions or one resolution with two resolves.
The two resolves.
It's up to you.
Yeah. Okay, why don't you read, Claire, what you've got?
Whereas the site plan for Louis Road was approved on December 8th, 2022. The site plan approvals for the golf course, et cetera, described in the second paragraph. The subdivision approvals for 118 dwelling units. The site plan condition number 11 stated prior to the issuance of a CO for the 31st market rate residential unit, 12 workforce housing units shall be constructed and the CO certificate of occupancy issued. Whereas the subdivision condition required a covenant for the following. Add provision indicating that no more than 30 market rate lots shall be issued certificates of occupancy unless and until a certificate of occupancy has been issued for the 12 affordable units. Whereas the applicant by letter dated August 12th, 2025 requests an amendment of the subdivision covenant and a modification of the site plan condition to allow the release of up to 59 market rate units before the completion of the workforce housing units. And whereas the planning board discussed the amendments at the August 14th, 2025 meeting and determined a public hearing on both requests was, would be warranted. Whereas a joint public hearing on the Louis Road PRD amendment to the site plan and the amendment of the covenants for the subdivision for, was held on September 11th, 2025 and the comments were received at the hearing as follows. The workforce housing should be constructed under the original timeframe, oppose the modification, concerned with the construction of dorms instead of affordable housing, community wants affordable housing, 12 units are for the local community members, affordable housing is separate from housing for staff, staff housing is a business use. Sites in violation should be rectified prior to decision posting for hearing was not visible from roadway, questioned sanitary flow and additional units not being permitted. Whereas the following are the comments provided 30-day written comma period as follows. Concerned about the environment impacts of the project, concerned with the proposed abandonment of the new road, concerned with the extensive clearing, concerned with other conditions and requirements not being followed, complete the affordable housing ASAP, affordable housing is needed, deny the request to delay the affordable housing, agree affordable housing is needed and agree with the request of the additional time to explore alternative options. Whereas the planning board discussed the amendments at the November 13th, 2025 meeting and finds that the extension of time from prior to the 31st unit to prior to the 59th unit is not in keeping with a reasonable timeframe to complete the workforce housing as the workforce housing is a key component required by state and town regulations and this delay may exasperate, exasperate, I cannot say that word. I couldn't write it. Exasperated. The social economic impact that the project was designed to address as part of the secret review. And whereas the planning board finds that a reasonable timeframe to complete the affordable units is prior to one-third of the total units or 39 units being completed and will modify the site plan condition to reflect the modification of said timeframe. And the planning board likewise will modify the covenants associated with Louis Road PRD subdivision to complete the affordable units is prior to one-third of the total units or 39 units. And will modify the site plan, sorry, the subdivision covenants to reflect the modification of said timeframe. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby modifies the condition of the Louis Road PRD site plan as follows. Prior to the issuance of the CO for the 39th market rate residential units, the 12 workforce housing units shall be constructed and the CO be issued. If further resolved, the planning board hereby modifies the covenant for the Louis Road PRD subdivision as follows. Add provision indicating that no more than 38 market rate lots shall be issued a certificate of occupancy unless and until a certificate of occupancy is issued for 12 affordable units and the requirement that the covenants be submitted and approval from the town attorney. So we wrote it differently.
Okay.
I said prior to 39 and he said 38. So this is why we're two people writing two different things. Say two different, but that means the same.
Okay.
That you can have up to 38 units. And then prior to the 39th being, you'd have to build it. 38.
Okay.
You have 38 units. I guess it's confusing. No, it's not really, no, I just might, I guess I did my math differently. That's all.
You did one-third of 118?
I did 118 times 3.33 and I got. I did one eighteen times three, point three-three, and I got thirty-eight point nine-four. So that's why I was thinking thirty-nine, so. That's why. And every, everyone is precious to us from a time standpoint, so, you know, my team was begging me to get forty, if they could get forty instead of the fifty-nine, so that's why I'm like, oh, could it be thirty-nine, so?
That's up to you.
Yeah.
I mean, it's right up on the cusp, so, and then that's why they're here.
I think we discussed it at length, and given all of the things that you've just read into the record out loud, and the public position to any changes to this lengthy process of getting to a site plan, I would hold at the thirty-eight that we discussed.
But we did give them a third. We'd said a third, a third is thirty-nine.
That's thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Mathematically, you're right.
Just checking, Jackie.
Yeah, it is thirty-nine.
That's up to you.
So I can say, I can say thirty-nine, thirty-nine and the fortieth unit, so that would be...
I mean, I, I was very comfortable with the one-quarter, one-third, one-half, so I, I didn't do the math.
You stick to the one-third to thirty-nine?
I didn't have this with me.
Issuance of the fortieth market-rate units, and it would be thirty-nine.
Well, I do it in my head, it's not.
You're a math person, though.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, Wayne?
I just want to say, thank you for your consideration. It's helpful, but, you know, the whole purpose of this is so that we can come back to this board and talk about alternatives, adding more housing. I think because we'll be a part of that and you'll be able to, we'll keep you apprised where we are in the process, and if for some reason that process, and it's acceptable, you know, where we're going with all that, and for some reason we're running afoul of this, I'm hoping the board would be willing or keep an open mind towards extending that further if we needed it at that time. That's all.
And you'll start building the affordable housing.
Yes.
This is an incentive for everyone to keep it moving.
Keep it moving with the affordable housing. Okay, so...
We'll be back soon.
Do you need to vote?
Yeah, we're gonna, want to do with the one vote, Claire, or the two?
One vote.
One vote to, I mean, the covenant and the site plan.
Up to thirty-nine units.
Up to thirty-nine units, as indicated in the resolution. So a motion by George, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Appreciate you, appreciate your time, thanks.
Teresa, is number eight off for sure? Is she here?
Number three, can I have a free camera for you?
That's off the agenda. Okay, Claire, you have Verizon Wireless?
So, do you want, you could turn that, someone else is giving you a little bit on that one. So this is South Tower on Riches Riverhead Road. It is existing lattice tower. The site are wireless code skates that if you go above a certain amount of antennas, you have to come in for site plan review before you. They've had their six antennas, and now they want three additional antennas. They're taking nine off, and they're putting twelve altogether on the property. Pretty much, I'm not quite sure what the site plans standards are here, they're just putting more on the plans.
They're colocating, yeah.
Which is what we prefer.
Yeah.
I guess it's just, like, if it was like a monopole, you could say, oh no, this is not what we do, you know?
Mm-hmm.
But this is all exterior, obviously not visible in the Pine Barrens.
It's the old lattice towers, right?
Right, exactly. So I've written a decision that gets approval, just compliance with the code, fire and martial approval, no additional lighting, no additional clearing, because it is in the Pine Barrens and aquifer protection. And my last requirement is that they submit three copies of the survey showing the clearing.
Are they adding to the base units at all?
No, not in this case. Like, sometimes they come in with a generator, or maybe additional equipments, but in this case, there's no additional equipment, yeah. And the applicants here, if you have any questions, for recommending approval with some conditions.
Any other questions? It's not visible at all, so that's great.
No, it's not. We've had a site plan on this before with Verizon, this is a different one with American Tower, so it's, it's exterior.
So, motion to approve, Tom, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. We're gonna jump to number nine, two-two-nine-seven Montauk. Teresa, that's you.
Yes. Two-two-nine-seven, if you may recall, we had a pre-submission conference on this application. It was the very first one that came in after the enaction of the Bullhead Main Street Historic District. They submitted revised project plans to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and DBA coordinated the project for SECRE, and we had requested lead agency. At their, one of their last meetings, they had relinquished lead agency, so this resolution is to assume lead agency. I have spoken with the applicant's agent, they are going to submit to us in the next couple of weeks, the revised plans that have been submitted to the zoning board for our review, so that we can review what's been reviewed by the zoning board. They are gonna grant us an extension on the SECRE until we've had an opportunity to review those documents, but this is a resolution just to assume the agency at this moment, and then we'll proceed with the SECRE.
This is a Farrell building?
This is the Farrell building, yes.
The new one?
Yeah.
The one where the existing house was demolished.
Yeah.
Until we clear it, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, motion for this?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Claire, you wanna do the Oceanside map, number four, six?
Can I do this? I'm assuming the applicant wasn't be here, I cannot speak to him. Did you, when you spoke to him last week, did you...
This Gaza?
I know we're meeting on Monday, but I thought, in light of the fact that it was on today, it would be different. He has a couple of applications, I don't know, it's odd that he's not here.
It is. Do you wanna, I don't like, I don't like the table things, because we have our new program, but do you want to table it towards the end, because there's more applicants here?
Yeah.
Okay.
You think he's coming?
Try and call him, I'll try and call him.
Yeah, do you mind?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
So let's hold on ten. Claire, and let's go to the Watermill Building Supply?
Yeah.
And the traffic report.
We do, we have a traffic report. So, um, Pierre, we have Robert, Beau, Beau Bay?
Robert, well, no, that's, that's not Robert.
You have a consultant. McLean Associates is your consultant on this, and they have their traffic consultant here. So they submitted a traffic study that you had hired McLean to do the review, so they have, they...
You did send it to us.
Yes, I emailed you, but I have other copies of it.
Good. It was in the packet. Yeah. Let me have your names again for the record.
Yes, Robert Fichetti, three-twenty Hampton Road, Southampton, for the applicant attorney.
Tom Farrell, fifteen Tall Tree Circle, and Riverhead.
Thank you.
I did bring, since it's been a while since we've had this...
Oh, great.
Just some things were working. That was the last revision that was submitted.
It's by every day, and think, what tree are they gonna take down on that? On that...
Rob, should we have, should we have Ron up here, or?
Uh, yes.
You can.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to sit behind.
Are you sure? So, does he show up? Peter?
Yes, but he declined to be a panelist.
You're fine to come in.
Who was that?
Our consultants. Our consultants.
Can you ask him again to reconsider?
Is he on? Can he come in on one?
All right. Here we go.
I know he's doing something else right now, too, because I'm supposed to be with him.
I just pressed the wrong button.
He might be signing out and joining quickly.
Here he is.
Hello, my name's Bobby Bouvet from LKMA.
If you could just speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry, hey, my name is Robert Bouvet from LKMA, you can call me Bobby.
Great. So, is it okay if you could describe your report and summarize it for the board?
Uh, sure, absolutely. I took a look at the traffic study submitted by the applicant, and took a look mostly at the, oh, start video, sorry about this. Hello, everybody?
Yes, welcome.
So I took a quick look at, you know, so I took a look at the, so I reviewed the...
We need a little bit more volume on your audio.
Okay, I don't know how to do that.
Unless we can control it here, Kevin.
You want me to just try to speak louder?
Can we get the audio level up, Kevin?
I'll try something.
Bobby, you might try just lifting the microphone on your earbuds up toward your mouth.
I don't know if it, I don't know if it even works that way, I'm sorry, my setup is all kind of funky, apologies.
That's a little better.
A little better.
That's better.
Is it, is it through here? I don't even know how this thing works, apologies, everybody.
Is that good enough?
You guys hear me?
Yes, it's better.
Much better, thank you.
Okay, so you want me just to run through the whole thing, just like a general summary, or do you guys have specific questions?
Yes, a general summary and then your recommendations, I think, yes.
Okay, so, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing property into two different, into two lots. They're going to consolidate the existing storage, building supply storage into a new building, and they're gonna move the existing plumbing supply business from the existing building that's already there to, to lot two, which will have a new building constructed on it. And as part of that, they're going to redesign the existing driveway to the west and construct a new full movement driveway that's gonna line up with Rhodes Hill Road. So the first kind of comment I had was just that, you know, this New York State DOT has jurisdiction over NYS twenty-seven, so any modifications to the state right away are gonna require a highway work permit, pretty standard, and just that they should, you know, any correspondence with the DOT should be provided to the town. Okay, and so, to assess the traffic, they did traffic counts at the existing, at the existing site. Currently, the site generates one hundred and twelve trips during the AM peak hour, one hundred and sixteen trips during the PM peak hour, and seventy-six trips during the Saturday peak hour. The comment here for me was that they didn't, they didn't say exactly when they did the counts, they didn't say exactly what date and time the counts were conducted, so I thought that information should be provided in general. To estimate the traffic generated by the proposed plumbing supply business, right, the new, the new building, they relied on industry-standard data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the Trip Generation Manual, Eleventh Edition. They use land use code eight twelve, which is building, building materials and lumber store, and so, which I think is the appropriate land use for this particular application. So based on their numbers with the eleventh edition, the proposed use is expected to generate like an additional thirty trips during the, during the, thirty-five trips during the AM, I'm sorry, thirty trips during the AM, thirty-five trips during the PM, and one hundred and twenty-five trips during the Saturday. Now, the applicant argues that the Saturday trip generation is, from ITE is high, and that's what the eleventh edition says. Now, it should be noted that the Trip Generation Manual has been updated to the twelfth edition, and the numbers for this particular land use in the twelfth edition are actually lower than what the eleventh edition was, and the Saturday data has actually been removed, so ITE didn't find that to be too reliable, so I'm inclined to believe the applicant that the Saturday counts are probably a little bit too, Saturday projection is a little too high. So based on the current generation, the current version of the Trip Generation Manual, the proposed plumbing supply business is expected to generate twenty-two trips in the, in the AM and then twenty-two trips in the PM, so the numbers they were using with the eleventh is actually higher than that. They also looked at an existing plumbing supply store, which is Ferguson Plumbing Supply Store, located at the southwest corner of the Suffolk County Route thirty-nine A at David White Lane over there. They said the counts were conducted, they did traffic counts for that, for that site, that existing site, from ten AM to noon on a weekday, and then noon to two PM, also on a weekday, and then noon to two PM on a Saturday. Again, they don't state the specific day that those counts were done, either the weekday or the Saturday, and they should provide that information. You know, so based on the trips from that existing one, which is, you know, a local use, and local data is generally preferred to the industry-standard data from the Trip Generation Manual, based on their, you know, from their local, based on that local use, the proposed plumbing supply uses, but is expected to generate fifteen trips in the AM, twenty-one trips in the PM, and about fifteen trips during the Saturday. So I think that approach is probably better, you know, than the Trip Generation, its particular use. You know, as mentioned earlier, they're gonna change that driveway, on the west side access driveway, they're gonna make some modifications to that. It's gonna be right, right out only from there, and then the other driveway will be full use. They said that's to make the site, to better handle truck traffic. I think the applicant should, you know, because it's a building supply company, you're probably gonna see some decent-sized trucks, they should identify exactly what the design vehicle is, and just provide a truck turning template that shows that whatever the design vehicle is, can get it out of the site, you know, safely. They did a site distance analysis for both driveways, both driveways, you know, for the movements that are allowed, right, right out only, and then the other one's full movement, they say that there's enough observed, not site distance, looks okay there. And then they did a parking analysis of the existing site. So because they broke it up into the two different lots, right, lot one is gonna require a hundred and nine spaces based on the town code, and lot two, it's gonna have the new, you know, the plumbing supply is gonna have fifty-four spaces required based on the town code. So what they are providing, lot one is going to have forty-six spaces and thirty, you know, including three handicap spaces in lot one, so they're gonna need a sixty-three space variance. I think they were previously granted a variance for sixty-three spaces on March tenth, twenty-sixteen, what they wrote in there. And then for lot two, there's gonna be sixty-one spaces provided, so that one's gonna meet the town code. That's the new one. And then, just looking at the, you know, the ITE data for these particular uses, again, using land use code eight twelve, that's building materials and lumber store, lot one is supposed to generate, you know, the expected parking demand is twenty-five vehicles, and the more conservative right there is thirty-three vehicles, eighty-fifth percentile parking demand, thirty-three vehicles for lot one, and this forty-six spaces are gonna be provided, that's gonna be plenty. And then for lot two, you know, it's even less because it's a smaller building size, so that the average parking demand for that is supposed to be seven vehicles, and the eighty-fifth percentile parking demand is ten vehicles, and they're providing sixty-one, so I think there should be enough parking provided. That's kind of the brief summary.
So in summary, you think just some updated information required, and it should be, the study should be complete, just having that information, the dates, right?
Yeah, I think they should just provide the dates, just to make sure that they counted during a typical day, they didn't count during a holiday, or something silly like that, and just providing turning templates for whatever the design vehicle, truck is, just to make sure it can get in and out of the site and stuff.
And the Trip Generation Manual, the later manual lowers the estimated trip count?
Yeah.
And they don't make any distinction between trucks and passenger vehicles, right? There's no counts for trucks versus passenger vehicles in, no.
In the, in the Trip Generation Manual?
Yeah, in the IT, the Trip Generation Manual.
Yeah, I could check it super quick right now, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Let me actually just pull it up real quick here. I'd like to get it real quick for eight twelve, if I can get you. Sometimes they do, it depends on the land, the specific land use. This one actually does, I mean, you could break it out by trucks, but, yeah, I mean, you want me to, you want me to just run it real quick right now, like what the, what the truck trip generation rate is for their size?
I don't know.
Well, you could ask them to provide that in the study.
If you can provide it, that would be, if you're gonna update with the times of the study, I'd be interested to see what those breakouts are.
At least for the existing site, I counted the amount of trucks as they came in, I thought I had that in the study from the actual counts, but if not, I can add it, because I have that data.
If you had it from the earlier study, and I'm just not remembering it.
I don't, right now, have the twelfth edition, it just came out in August.
Okay.
Oh, you asked me about existing or proposed, I'm sorry.
If it's in the eleventh, I have it. Couple other things, the, we counted in, or I counted those in late March and early April, I can provide the, the actual dates. I think we have provided truck templates to the board, I just don't think they went in with the report.
Okay.
So, you have them, it's just a matter of getting them to LKMA.
Okay. Okay.
Interesting to have, if you have.
And he should, Bobby need to review the truck, the truck templates and the turning radius movements through the site as well, right?
Yeah, so we can provide that to, because I do remember that, too, but we can provide you to the truck turning radius, Robert, and then you could just double-check if you think that looks correct, okay?
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, do you mind? Yeah, that would be great. Oh, and I can just email it to him. That'd be great.
Yeah, the other thing is that, uh, I believe we have approved plans from the state now, or close to.
Yes, the DOT, uh, we have an email from the DOT from just a little over a week ago where they approved our plan. We can't get the permit until we submit, like, contractor insurance information, but I do have their approval of the plan. Uh, they said they approve our plan.
And a little for the two.
Approved, yes.
Pretty much, that's what they do.
Give us a bond.
For the, for the two entrances.
Yes, as we designed, as was proposed.
Okay, good. 21 drawings later.
Okay, great.
We kill a lot of trees.
Yeah.
I think it'll be nice, yeah. So what's our, what's our next step here?
Well, this would be good, so, um, I think these are things can be turned around, but that's up to you. Uh, can you get that to me by Monday so he can take a look at it? Rob, are you available next week to take a look at this stuff? Will you provide it by Monday?
Yeah, absolutely, should be pretty quick.
Okay, and then, um, we could have you on for Thursday. It's up to you, but, uh, can you have them Thursday for the SECR? Because I think this was the last SECR issue.
Yeah, that would be great.
That'd be good.
So just so we're clear, we're getting you the, we're going to resubmit the truck, uh, template, uh, for turning, and we're going to, uh, update the report to show the date and times of the, uh, of the counts.
Right, and then the truck, uh, if you could provide the trucks separated from the car.
I'll provide the actual counts of what was, what I found, um, when I counted the site.
Your, your manual check, your visual check.
I remember when I, when I looked at the plumbing supply, I really didn't see any, any big trucks. It was mainly pickups and that kind of stuff. That was different in Riverhead building, below the door larger trucks. But certainly, the, uh, the character of the vehicle going in there was pickups and vans, more than passenger vehicles.
Right, right.
And then if you have the approved approval, obviously, from the DOT, that's great.
Uh, yes, we have it in email, they approved the plan, yeah, I'll submit that.
That'd be great. I mean, I think all that helps, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have this on for the, the November 20th.
Next Thursday.
Number 20. Save these, Rob, for us, and then distribute them again, because that's helpful.
Thank you, Robert.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, Teresa. Yep, you're next, Madsen.
No, that's Make Free.
Oh, it's Anthony, sorry.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, this is a property on 416 Montalke Highway, these quag, it's, um, west of, uh, sort of merges, and then there's a, uh, a triangle piece, a restaurant sitting on that section of highway.
It's an old country road and?
Yeah, that's right. And actually, the, you can sort of see it, it's the, uh, it's a lot right here. Um, it's got an existing residence, it's R20 zone. We, in fact, did a pre-application on this, um, that expired. I don't want to distinguish this from the next one that I'm going to do. But this one, uh, they came in with a new pre-application because they don't have, uh, a health department or anything at this point. So extending it wouldn't have been sensible. So all that we're going to do is two lot subdivision, I know it's on Montalke Highway, uh, creating two lots. They actually took the previous pre-app report and put the buffer on the map, so at least we know that we're reading that. Uh, but we're just going to deem this complete and schedule a pre-app hearing for December 11th.
Motion by Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent, so that's a public hearing for 12/11. Now, and then Toplands.
So everyone can see, Toplands, I believe that's 13 on the agenda.
Number 13.
And it should be number 24 on the latest agenda also, just to make sure, I want to make sure. It's 24 on that.
Because there are two actions here, right?
Yeah, it's two, so, this is one, let me.
Which one do you want to do first?
We're going to do 24 first.
Okay.
So that's the extension.
That's the extension. So it's listed as 24 Topin, Toplands Realty Holdings?
So the board, um, we've had a few applications in and around this area, but, um, the two properties, uh, in question are this piece here. And then, let me just make sure. So if you can see up on the aerial, I have the one in red, two lots in the CRAD zoning district, one here and one here. They both have residence on there. The application was for it to reconfigure, I don't know where it is, the two lots that were going down the middle like that, you know, that there was configured, is they created stack lots behind them. Required going to the zoning board to do it this way. Um, actually, this is a map here. Uh, one of the things the board should be aware is this back lot, you see that second lot in the back, actually has frontage along, I think it's William Street or, um, but it's a private road, actually, that they don't have rights to, but they do have the legal frontage. So, um, it didn't require a ZBA action, but they, they got some relief, lot width, maybe a couple of small things here. And because they couldn't take access here, what we did was, um, we have an easement going over this property so they could take access, uh, from this road instead, so, uh, that's how that map came to be. It started with another planner, I'm, I'm taking it over. Uh, this one came in with the final application, they had to go to the zoning board, they came in with the final application with their health department approval. When I got the application, I realized that the pre-application was expired. Uh, but here, they came in with a health department approval. So I don't really see any reason why I wouldn't just extend the pre-app report, just to make it whole.
Is it based on this map?
It's based on this map, yeah, 100%. Um, so number 24 on the agenda is just an extension of the pre-app, uh, for Topin. Um, I, we do them for a year, so it'll be good for September 26th of 2026.
So you want that action first?
Yeah, action first.
Okay, so motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent, and then we move to 13.
Yep, and we will deem the final application a complete, schedule the hearing for December 11th. So we have four that night, three of them are mine, so all of them.
Okay, great. Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, uh, six in favor and one absent.
Can I just do one more?
Yeah.
16.
Number 16.
MRM Ventures?
Yep.
All right. This is just to set up a pre-submission conference, 801. County Route 39, this is on the north side of County Route 39. Uh, this shopping center, uh, is the one that has the Goldbergs, uh.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. In there. There used to be an OTB in there, I think, if I remember.
Yeah, yeah. Then it was totally redone.
Yeah, then we, yeah, they, actually, the signage came out really nice there. Um, this, uh, they're looking to utilize the space on the, uh, westernmost portion of the property for a cannabis dispensary. Uh, they got their, uh, proximity protection from the state. If the board realizes that across the street here, we had an application for one near the condo development.
Yeah. Yes, that club.
They have not submitted, um, a formal application. Um, so right now, um, there is no separation instance because we don't have an application for this particular site.
But what about the, the cannabis board? Do, do they both have applications before the cann?
No, the one, the one that we did a pre-submission across, you know, at the former, the nightclub site. They did a pre, uh, a pre-submission conference report. It's well over a year now, but they have never come in with a formal application.
Okay, so they've never gone to the, to the state cannabis board then?
As far as I know, but, but it'll be interesting to see if they do, because this is clearly within the thousand feet.
Yes.
Uh, this applicant came in with a formal application, um, so we'll, we'll process it. Um, and that's also for December 11th.
So we're giving a complete, setting a schedule, scheduling hearing. Uh, motion by David, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. So you're done, Anthony, right?
Just map signatures, you can do that later.
Yeah, and that, and they've been done.
Okay, so let's acknowledge those, map signatures. Uh, Stella Luna Family Trust has been acknowledged, and the Hamptons Collective has been signed and acknowledged. 30 and 35. Very easy. Good, Teresa, this is you, Hampton Coffee?
Yes, um, as you may recall, we had, uh, set the pre-submission conference at the last meeting for December 11th. However, the applicant agent informed me after the fact that he would not be available for such date, so he has requested the January 8th, uh, date for 2026. So this is just rescheduling that for 2026.
Okay, so.
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
First, 2026.
Yeah.
Agenda, I don't know.
Right, Claire, Ridge Petroleum.
You vote by that time?
Yeah.
We have received many communications.
A plethora.
Hello.
May I introduce yourself, Charles?
Charles Southern, registered architect.
Spell that, uh, Charles, S-U?
S-O-U-T-H-A-R-D.
This is the proposal. We took a peek at this last week. Dennis correctly noted, there's no road designations on the map, and he quickly turned this around.
They also gave you an overlay from the existing building and the new building, which.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, let, let Claire give us the basics.
Yeah, oh, okay, so the, um, the application is a pre-submission, I'll just back up here for a second. There was an application for a convenience store, uh, demolition of the existing structures, convenience store and the gas station with a canopy. It was, um, before the zoning board appeals, you received it, and, uh, there was a positive declaration on the project. The applicant withdrew the ZBA application, and they are starting again. The application is for a, uh, car repair, an expansion. Um, I believe the existing is about 11, uh, 1100 square feet. Here, I can read off the numbers on this. And the proposal is for about 17, uh, hundred square feet, uh, so an 50% expansion on the use, of the use.
Is it pre-existing?
Uh, pre-existing, not completely used, yes.
So you're up to 50? You can get up to 50%?
With the zoning board appeals, yeah, it's zoned HO, so that, that does not allow gas station, as a right, it's pre-existing to zoning, gas station, the repair shop. So, um, so these starting again with the pre-submission, um, you prepare, uh, a resolution for setting up a pre-submission conference or so we can, you know, hear the public's comments on this. And it's, uh, any questions for Charles, unless Charles wants to speak?
So, Charles, this, so this is a, a building that will do repairs and maintenance, car maintenance, and you'll have pumps as well?
That's the existing, yes. Okay, the proposal is, uh, what we're doing is adding a whole solar project on. We are putting 120 solar panels on the roof. We will put, uh, three 20 kilowatt battery storage in a new room that's created, one of part of the addition. Uh, we will have three, uh, level two, uh, vehicle charges in the parking area on the side. And, uh, the purpose of the expansion is for the, uh, existing electrical equipment, the batteries, the, uh, waiting room, and, uh, toilets for, uh, battery charging people.
So there's not going to be a gas station anymore?
Oh, yes, still going to be, remain a gas station. This is in addition to the existing gas station.
Are you knocking down the, what's there?
Yes.
And starting again?
Yes.
Do you have any elevations to show us?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
The battery storage, where does that fit into our new zoning code?
It's approved.
Thanks.
Battery storage is just, we consider the small battery storage up to 80 kilowatts. Storage is permitted.
Is that allowed to be stored inside? You said it would be inside the building?
Yes.
What?
Not related to car batteries, this is.
Well, they charge car batteries, yeah, for electric vehicles. Not, not related to regular car batteries, no, for electric vehicles.
Is there any, um, proximity in, like, a fire code proximity for battery storage to fuel, um, stations?
Not till I know.
Okay, just noting that.
Fuel storage is underground, pumps are quite far away from it, so I don't think it's a problem, but it's a good question.
Yeah, always.
Seth, there is a separation?
There's certainly a lot of fire codes that apply to setbacks to something that's flammable. There's a ton of code on that, uh, but that's fire code, building code, uh, types of things. But it'll all be looked at if he's proposing.
Just something to research, thank you.
But maybe you should just check, Charles, to educate yourself.
I will, thank you.
So what are we looking at here? This, uh...
Did you get them a little rendering too?
Uh, the ren, oh, the rendering?
Very back, it's on the very back of your, of your package.
Oh, there it is, yeah, the smaller.
We can see it from here.
Further building has a canopy, uh, to cover the pumps, the fueling pumps. And the rest of the building, the reason the, for the new building totally is because of the fact that, number one, the setbacks require a 30 foot from each road. And, number two, the, uh, direction of the building is properly suited for adding this many solar panels on the roof. The other building that, uh, the back of the building was small and faced basically south. This way, we have an east and a west, so we can put solar panels on both sides of the building.
So the orientation of the building is going to be wide to the road?
North, east, and southwest.
But it'll be wi, the wide-facing portion of the building will be to the road?
No, the small portion.
The front portion?
If you look at the site plan.
Yeah, you can see, this is the existing building, and this is the new.
The building is only 32 foot wide, and, uh, the 32 foot wide frontage faces on Montalke Highway. Longer exposure faces on Walker Avenue on the side.
And how many gasoline pumps and how many charging stations?
We're permitted three now, we'll have three.
I see.
Uh, we're going to add three, uh, dual electric vehicle charges. And I couldn't find any code on electrical vehicle charging in your code, I went through everything. So, um, I'm assuming it's a permitted use, I know the solar panels are a permitted use, the batteries are a permitted use. And, uh, like I said, I can't find the charges, vehicle charges, but I know the, uh, they're approved in residences, so I don't know why they wouldn't be approved, you know.
What are, what are these and these? I'm seeing two of them.
We have three pumps, we have permitted three pumps. The other is a possible location for electric vehicle charger, if we go to, uh, a level three. But the two in the back are, uh, the gasoline pumps, the one in the, the, one of the ones in the front is a diesel pump. We have permission for those now.
Okay, so, and where are the, um...
They're on the side, if you turn it around, uh, by your left hand, right on the edge of your left hand, you'll see three items right next to the parking places.
Got it. Okay.
Charles, what if, was that the battery stor, is that storage meant to supplement charging the, of the electric vehicles?
Correct, that's for the.
Taking power from the solar and then coming back?
Correct, that's for the, uh, the gasoline, the operation of the station, and for the vehicle charging.
The solar panels?
Potential here, we've looked into it, potential here for level three charges. Level three charges would require us to go to 400 amp service, which we, would require a transformer on the property. We're not ready to go there yet, we don't know if, um, how much is going to be paid, pay off. Um, if we find out that it is advantageous, we will go to the next.
Are you using the solar panels solely for your own use, or is it, are you going back to the grid with it?
Uh, we're allowed, we could store, we, we're planning to store 60 kilowatts. If we produce more than 60 kilowatts and don't use it, it will go back to PSENG. But basically, it's for use on the site.
So you'll have to get an, an agreement with PSENG?
Yeah, that's a standard.
And you'll install all new underground, uh, fuel storage tanks?
Um, the owner's talking about it, we have a, we just got a, um, we knew all of the existing tanks from Suffolk County Health Department, but, um, I think the owner wants to replace those tanks with a larger, one larger tank, rather than, I think he's got three small tanks now.
And you'd need a special diesel tank as well?
We have that now.
You have a diesel tank?
Right. Right, there is, there is two gasoline pumps, multi-fuel gasoline pumps and one diesel pump now.
And how old is that diesel tank, diesel storage tank?
These are all approved by Suffolk County.
So they're relatively.
They're not new, but they are of the, uh.
They're double wall.
The double wall, and double wall fiberglass line, they're, they're, you know, they were, they were just recently renewed their, their permits were approved for.
So your diesel, uh, business is more for trucks or, because they're not that?
Fire department was one of the big clients, the local fire department. There's nowhere around to try to re-get diesel fuel.
So a fire truck is going to be able to circulate around this lot?
On the front, yes. That's why the pump, the, the diesel pump is on the outside.
Okay, I mean, we spent a lot of.
And they wouldn't be going, they wouldn't be going underneath the canopy either. They would be outside of the canopy. So we don't have a height problem.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we spent a lot of time on this application in terms of access and buffering and.
Yes.
Uh, the last time because, you know, you're in an area with a lot of residences right down Walker.
Right, right. Well, we've tried to do that. We've got, if you noticed the amount of landscaping on the, on Walker Avenue. Um, we've, uh, changed the entries to the site, the site access, all of them, we've, we've sort of directed them. The way it is right now, you could, you could drive over every part of the site. There's no curbs, there's no drainage on the site, which, you know, from before. So this way everything's guided and directed the way it should be.
So you've done nothing to this site from the last time when you proposed something and then just dropped it, right? So the site remains?
No, site is exactly the way it was before.
So I see you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parking spaces?
Um, I believe it's eight. Eight is eight, eight.
Is that enough for the? I don't know what the requirement.
Well, the, the requirements for a fueling station or a vehicle repair station are kind of funny. Uh, they require two per bay and there, there was, will remain to be two bays, so that's four. And then there's also parking out, uh, by the pumps, which is backup space and everything, so it's kind of difficult to calculate, but.
Well, you've got three pumps.
We've shown what we have.
You have three pumps?
We have three pumps.
So that's six, six spaces.
Well, there'll be, if we allow two spaces for each pump, there'll be six spaces.
Correct.
You know, in the fueling aisle, and then we have an additional eight spaces of parking.
According to the agenda, this, we were setting up a pre-submission conference report. Sounds like we're doing it.
Oh, conference.
Yeah.
Conference, not the report.
Said pre-submission conference.
Conference.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
So we should move to that?
What is what you're suggesting? It's like we're, we're actually having it right now.
Oh, the, the conference is the public hearing, obviously.
Okay, so it's just an evening session.
Right, that's the proposal. They have the required information to process it. Um, but do you have some questions? That's great. And I recommend the January eighth meeting.
Yeah, is this property leased or, uh?
No, this is owned.
Owner operated?
Yes.
So January, are we doing a pre-submission conference or a public hearing for this?
Conference, yeah, conference.
Yeah, I, we often have a work, I guess that's a work session. I'm getting confused with that terminology.
Yes, I mean, you could have a work session on this if you want more.
I think we just had a work session.
Yeah, I think you did, yeah.
So that's what we had.
Yes, yeah, it was great information, um, lots of questions that he was able to answer.
Interesting concept. This is sort of twenty-first century, a little bit of.
Thinking, thinking forward. So, okay, so that's my recommendation.
There's not a lot of level three charges, but enough Tesla or Rivian.
No.
Claire, do you want?
So we're, we're scheduling this for a January eighth?
Twenty twenty nine, almost.
Yeah, okay, motion by Gloria and second by Kate.
Do you need that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close extension, six in favor, and one absent.
I will let you finish because I'm going to make a best.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Do you want to sit here?
Seth. Seth, you've got a whole bunch. Number seventeen, Flanders Auto Repair.
The site plan came in for two sixty-five Flanders Road, uh, this.
Oh, just so you know, Oceanside is off, please, and so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's over to next week. Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have to add that, Claire, to the November twentieth?
Yes.
You ready? Yeah. Okay, so this is two sixty-five Flanders Road, uh, a site plan came in for a, uh, an auto body shop. Uh, this will be a change of use from, uh, its, its existing use, which is true.
True art?
True art.
True art, that's the one. Uh, yeah, so this is in the LI forty, uh, the APOD and the compatible growth area. Uh, the applicant is going to change the use to an auto body repair shop, uh, which is a special exception use in the LI forty. The, in order to do so, uh, they're going to need to remove, uh, a bunch of the overhead doors. There's four currently on this site. And they're going to remove three of them. The reasoning behind that is each bay, as was just pointed out, requires a certain amount of parking. Uh, so with four, with, uh, four overhead bays, there'd be a requirement for more parking than they're, uh, willing to or would like to have on the site. There's currently five, as you can kind of see here. Uh, that would be four, four per bay plus one employee. Uh, so it's really a, a modification to an existing site plan. Uh, I can tell you that they had a revegetation plan. Uh, if you've driven by it, it's been pointed out that it doesn't look very good. Unfortunately, it had a, a revegetation plan in twenty-three that was approved. Maybe we could work on that. But at, at any rate, it's complete, their application is complete as of right now. Uh, and we'll be scheduling a, a public hearing for the eleventh, I, of December. We, I had asked earlier to have.
So that's the fourth or fifth?
Fourth.
That'd be the last one, fourth.
Yeah, there's four. They should be pretty.
We need them to deem them complete and follow the comments.
So just, uh, deem it complete and we'll set, set.
Schedule of, okay, so a motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, it's deemed complete and, uh, December eleventh public hearing. Number eighteen?
If I may ask for number twenty, as we're in the revegetation area and I have Brian sitting here waiting.
So Laurel Acres Lot Number Three, number, I have twenty.
This would be the, the more difficult of the, the revegetations, only insofar as there's a transfer of development rights involved.
Name for the record.
Brian Locassio with the Adam Miller Group, two four six two Main Street, Bridgehampton, attorney for the applicant. Uh, I can give you a very brief history of this property, um, before Seth does. So this client purchased this, uh, some years ago. Now, we didn't handle the purchase, but it was one of those, um, marketed with room for, you know, pool and tennis. Um, the property is heavily burdened by, uh, landscaping and driveway easements, kind of all through his crazy driveway configurations on his property. So it's just so much of that is eaten up by clearing. Um, they recently applied, uh, to construct a swimming pool near the house and came to light that was significantly overcleared. There was really no way to truly revegetate this property to have any sort of like at all allowable outdoor space. Um, so what they did was they, um, entered into a contract to purchase a parcel of, uh, development right for about seventy-five hundred square feet of clearing. And we are proposing an extensive revet plan to get this property, um, obviously not in compliance because we are seeking a waiver, but it will, um, restore a lot of the native vegetation, this property, kind of allow the client to, you know, enjoy what they believe they were purchasing when they purchased this, what was intended to be their retirement home.
Where, where is the property that you purchased?
Um, it's off of.
I can pull it up.
It's off the Turnpike. We recently, it was before you recently, as, um, we applied portion of the six thirty Millstone Road. This is the residual of that credit. But it's off of, um, kind of near like the community center. There's a wetland pocket behind and development rights are preserved.
Bridgehampton Turnpike?
Yeah, it's just a couple miles away. It's in close proximity, so it meets all the criteria, I would argue.
And so you're sterilizing that piece?
Yep.
Part of the Long Pond Green Belt.
Great.
And if this is approved, they would completely sterilize that.
Sag Harbor Turnpike.
And so what, what's the parcel that you're sterilizing? That long one?
This guy here.
Okay.
So it's got wetlands, it's, it's a fantastic spot.
Yes.
Well, could it actually?
Space next door, so perhaps.
So he's lifting the rights from that and applying it to this, which is good.
So this is the mother lot, the, we, I have, he's presented us a TDR, uh, which is, which covers thirty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Uh, the clearing aspect of that is a quarter of it, twenty-five percent, which would be the allotment that he, uh, is asking for, which was seven thousand five hundred and ninety-seven of clearing rights. But in actuality, it's thirty thousand square feet of land, uh, that's left for that parcel. Uh, which will be, uh, upon, uh, your acceptance would be deeded over, or I should say, created, made into open space.
So the, so the entire, um, TDR will be extinguished with the.
This is what's left of that lot. It will be in its entirety. That, this one here is for seven thousand five hundred and ninety-seven.
So is that, so that's why they have a clearing completely?
That's.
No, there's a revet plan that I'm passing out right now.
There's more.
I think we're, we're being, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet of vegetation will be.
You could buy, you could buy another piece over there. You could.
Uh, no, so.
Is there more available there for TDRs?
Uh, that was the last of the fragments for that specific lot. And just so you're aware, that's less than a mile away, uh, to the site.
Very close.
Yeah, I see.
This would be the site and this is where we just were.
Right.
So, which is important that we're.
Well, I think TDRs for this, uh, sort of problem is terrific.
Yeah, I mean, this is like such an extreme with the, the driveway easements that they kind of allegedly, you know, unknowingly inherited when they purchased this. So it's, the, the lot is heavily burdened from that regard and that the neighbor controls so much of their property.
Are they going to do away with some of these driveways?
Yes, all the driveways in the center of the property are, are removed, except for the one to the, I guess, the east, because that's the neighbor's driveway.
This one stays.
And this whole, this is all our property and fee, but it's completely controlled by the neighbor. It, it's just such a large chunk. We explored a lot on my vacation, but it was, wasn't well received by the neighbor and it.
What do you mean controlled by the neighbor?
They have a, a driveway and landscaping. At one point, you know, they owned multiple lots in this and they created this grand driveway scheme that they love. And it's quite beautiful when you come up a sag road, but it just, from a clearing perspective, it just eats up way too much land. And it just makes.
So the entrance is?
Off of Sag Road to, kind of where those driveways converge. They then come wrap around that house, uh, to the south, Seth. I believe it come out right to your right.
To the bottom there?
Yeah, it's a just.
It's a very strange alignment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just the way the lot lines were done.
I mean, it's great even though it's a common driveway, one curb cut servicing multiple lots, but it's, once you get beyond that, it's, um, a very.
Looks like an amoeba.
It does, kind of, like a squid.
So this was the most, um, palatable that I, I viewed a solution to this problem that I could bring before you all and allow the.
So part, I understand part of it, so now what about this, Seth?
So we have an allowance for twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-two as of right, twenty-five percent. We just added through a TDR, seven thousand five hundred and ninety-seven. So now they're allowed to clear thirty-six thousand eight forty-nine. They still have to make up, uh, their existing is sixty-four and change. They have to make up through revegetation, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three. A lion's share of that in actuality is the removal of, of this driveway going right through the heart of the property. Um, so I have, they, he's, uh, Brian has brought you the revegetation plan. Uh, it does have a number, but a saving grace for this is there are a lot of trees on this parcel. There, it wasn't clear cut, it wasn't turned into lawn.
Yeah, the mature trees remain and we're preserving those.
So they are going to augment the trees, uh, throughout the, the area. They're going to be redoing the, uh, the driveway, excuse me. And, uh, so it was a pretty sizable, uh, revegetation. I think with the two, uh, in, working in tandem, we will have a.
A good plan. Were those gravel driveways?
Those are.
Yes, they're all gravel, yes.
So they'll be replanted, taken up and replanted?
Exactly, yeah.
And you said something about a pool?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the area where we're, we're considering, or, you know, that's not being revegetated is this kind of yard off of the house. So, kind of more or less for the driveway wraps around. That's where they're proposing their pool.
Okay.
Maybe a little pool house, so it's, we're kind of staying within disturbed area. And then we're, we're filling it around the perimeter of the property to the east and.
You've taken that into account, Seth?
I have. I, I, the one thing that I was going to suggest, uh, as this has been a move, has been moving pretty quickly, is I had, there's a lack of grasses. So that I would request that the applicant certainly put a lot more grasses on this revegetation.
I'm happy to work with Seth. He, in his, uh, he just received his plan two days ago, maybe, so I don't, in his, I'm happy to give him one more time to adjust and make sure it's a, plant him, eat his blessing, but as you can see, we're, I'm committed to revegetation here.
Looks like a project, but the TDR is great. So what are we doing, Seth?
We, uh, we, uh, accept the TDR. Uh, I have, before you, I pass around a resolution suggesting that, uh, that the TDR will cover what we discussed. Uh, the seven thousand five hundred ninety-seven square feet. And then additionally, with the revegetation of the twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six, this will put, uh, seven eighty-eight Sag Road, uh, into compliance.
Right, but council, do we need a, uh, council, do we need a separate TDR approval?
Yeah, it's, you can put it all in.
Put it all in one?
That's fine.
Okay.
I had, yeah, I used another one that did the two together, so.
Excellent. Okay.
I'm just wondering about.
Question is, I'm sorry, is Seth was saying that you have some questions about the revet plan specifically on grasses, so is, is this some?
I'm going to put into the resolution, uh, for passage that the applicant has agreed to put in grasses throughout all the revegetated areas. They're, they're not represented on the current revegetation plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just wanted to know what the plan was for access. It wouldn't disturb the revegetated areas when you're looking at the pool?
No, because we're preserving the driveway along the north. That driveway is.
That shorter driveway.
And then the driveway on the far right east.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's burdened by easement, so we don't have the ability to do anything with that, but that will remain.
So they could get in that one?
So we will have, yeah, I agree. Both lots will remain accessible.
Build a, build a pool.
Yes, correct, yep.
Okay, I guess, um, fencing for the pool?
Sorry, fencing for the pool, always.
The pool is not part of this application, but yes, so that would, the pool requires all building, all building regulations.
I'm afraid I can't get around fencing for the pool.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about during the construction, that they don't undo the vegetation that we're, we're requiring as part of this application.
You could put a condition, any future site development requires project limiting fencing to preserve revegetated areas, you know?
Future, for future projects, okay. Like the pool, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, maybe if they're ready, we can have it all in one action. So like the pool can be put in, then the planting's put in, so everything can actually.
That's better.
You know, it's a client, they're ready, I'd be happy to work with you and the building department. And that, now it makes sense for everything.
Put the pool in first, then do the revegetation.
Probably economically beneficial, then, if they have the ability.
Do we vote on this?
No, I'll move it though.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria. A lot of questions came in. Uh, motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks, Brian.
Six in favor, one absent. Do you want to do ten, number eighteen, ten Laurel Lane?
Okay. So this is a twenty thousand square foot, uh, lot off the Sag Harbor, Bridgehampton Turb Pike. And it's in the CR two hundred, uh, uh, additionally the, uh, APOD. Uh, this, this site was, uh, undergoing, uh, some renovation work, uh, over the last year and, and in October fifteenth of last year, there was an NOB issued for, for overclearing. Um, there might be someone on Zoom. Peter, is there anyone on Zoom, a Mr. Mackey by any chance? there was an NOB issued for, for overclearing. Um, there might be someone on Zoom. Peter, is there anyone on Zoom, a Mr. Mackey by any chance?
There's only an Ina Monte.
Nope. Okay. Well, afraid we missed him. At any rate, uh, this was cited for an overclearing. Uh, the homeowner was unaware of the system of how to correct that, uh, being out of compliance with our code, and took it upon themselves to revegetate. Uh, they went, uh, well, well beyond what they were required to do. They had a sixty percent allowance for the clearing. Um, the, the photo does no justice to what, uh, they've done since. Uh, I have seen it, uh, back in October, and, uh, they have gone to, uh, great lengths to, to revegetate it all the way to thirty-seven point five or seventy-five hundred square feet of, uh, clearing. So they put in twelve red oaks, thirty, uh, bayberries, a, a bunch of ferns, butterfly weed, switch and sedge grasses, uh, to basically address this area that was, and this area here. So I've seen their revegetation with my own eyes. I think they've, they've gone well beyond what they were required to do. So I would suggest that their revegetation plan exceeds our compliance and suggest we pass it. Motion?
Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor. All in. Pose abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Nineteen.
Ninety-seven Tanager, part of the Tanager Hill subdivision. Watermill. CR two hundred, additionally, the APOD. Uh, this is a site that was built to fit the clearing. Um, they, they maxed it out in many, in many cases, so I, uh, took this project on at the bitter end as it was, it was shown to us that they had overcleared and that it was going to be very difficult to get the, uh, the actual twenty-five percent back. Uh, there is additionally a, uh, an access agreement, or an access easement on the north there for utilities and drainage. Uh, so there was a, there was some work that had to be done. We had to pull an underground tank out of there. Uh, so the applicant has been working diligently, trying to get in compliance with our code. The revegetation plan has gone back and forth. It's within ten feet of the house and the pool and the tennis court. But they got their twenty-five percent, uh, and they have been forced to put in a, a lot of different plants. I've got thirty oaks, four dogwoods, huckleberries, bayberries, blueberries, and the, the, the grasses that are commonplace, sedge, switch, and bracken fern. Uh, the revegetation was twenty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-two, uh, equivalent to sixteen point two percent. Uh, so it was a sizable, uh, revege. And, uh, the applicant and I have been working diligently back and forth, pulling things, uh, you know, they oftentimes want to put in on the septic system, so we got it off of that. And we, I got it everywhere I could, and it's twenty-five percent, so.
Great, great. Now, when did they start, when is the planting window? Is it closed now, or?
Uh, this one has, uh, I actually had said to him, go ahead and get going on this, because, so he's done a lot of the work already, quite honestly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, motion on this by George, second by Tom, all in favor.
Right.
Pose abstentions, six in favor, one absent. You have one more, number twenty-one, Caldwell Homes, lot eight.
That one, uh, unfortunately, they were not able to get me their revege plan, so I pushed it to the twentieth, yeah.
So this is off?
Off.
You have number twenty-three as well, if you want to keep them going, uh.
And, no.
I guess you can go in order, that's fine.
Okay, so we have two, uh, do your extension. You have an overclear?
I have a one extension myself.
Number twenty-three, the Gerald Lynch lot, one, six months to April.
Yeah, that shouldn't have, uh, my name on it. It's a, a six-month extension. The approval expired in October. Uh, so this would take them to April twenty-four of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Motion?
Motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor. Pose abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Going back to, so you don't have that?
Eight-ten.
Teresa.
Eight-ten Ag Building Site.
Eight-ten Ag, uh, eight-ten Lumber Lane. We had done a public hearing on it for an agricultural construction permit for a barn. Um, it had been referred to the Agricultural Committee. Um, the committee had some significant concerns that they wanted additional information on. The applicant is working to address those concerns. Um, so they have granted us an extension of the action deadline to January, so that they can work with the, uh, Ag Advisory Committee to bring that into, um, to alleviate their concerns.
That's the eight-ten with a, that big field.
Yep. With the big field.
Yeah.
There were some violations there. They resolved those violations. They want to put in an orchard and some various other agricultural activities and a barn. Um, and again, uh, the Ag Committee had some significant concerns, and they're willing to address those with the Ag Committee, and they've granted us an extension of the action deadline.
Okay, to what date, January?
January eighth.
January eighth.
Those are January fifteenth references, that, uh?
Well, I'll correct that.
No, no, they had to.
No, I mean, is the fifteenth better?
Well, I don't know, you said.
No, it, it was a typo. I, I was looking at the calendar wrong.
Okay, you want, you want the eighth?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion by Gloria, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose abstentions, six in favor and one absent. And we are now up to Teresa, twenty-five.
Sixteen Indian Avenue LLC.
This is, uh, in Hampton Bays, we did a, uh, pre-application report for a property of, it's not actually sixteen Indian. It's, uh, one thirty-eight Springville, I believe. It was a two-lot subdivision.
It's not two oh one.
No, uh, two oh one. I do, I didn't have the address in front of me. Um, it's a, it was a two-lot subdivision. They had cleared the lot. We had went back and forth about that. Um, and then, uh, we did, I know, pre-app report. We get, granted them one extension. This is a second extension, so you'd need to waive the policy and adopt, adopt the second extension, um, of the pre-app report, because they're having difficulties getting through the, the Health Department.
We need to waive it? Do we need to waive the, uh, policy of, it just extended one year?
Okay, go ahead.
It, it's been extended one year already.
Okay.
And so they're asking for a second extension. So we waived the, the policy, correct, for that second extension?
One action.
One action.
Yeah, one action.
Okay, so we're waiving the policy for the second year extension and extending for another year that will go to.
Um, I believe it's September twenty twenty.
September fifteenth, twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, okay. Motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Seth, you're back with, uh, another extension?
Yes, we're trying to close out the Boosel site plan, yeah. Uh, this was approved back in March thirteenth, uh, March thirteenth. Uh, the one thing that's holding them up is the mortgage consent deed and just waiting and waiting. Uh, so they'll, I'll need three extensions, uh, for nine hundred dollars and hoping, hoping to close it out by December eight, uh, the, the December meeting.
Yes.
So that would be an extension until December eighth.
You don't want to go in, you don't want to go into January twenty twenty-six?
Well.
Sometimes what happens is you give a short extension and then we have it back on the agenda.
Then I'm right back doing another one. I don't know what to say. If he was here, I'd ask him.
Okay, so it's an extension to this.
Deadline is already passed, right?
If they, well, it, the final approval was March thirteenth, twenty-five, yeah.
And you're extending it.
And I'm wanting to do three extensions to get to December eighth.
Three?
Yeah. And I, so.
Claire.
We don't do, we don't do it that way. Subdivisions are different than site plans.
Okay.
So he's expired.
Okay.
He's re, he's reapproving it. But you're going to reapprove it, when you reapprove it, you give two years.
Oh.
So it's great.
So we can just do a reapproval?
Yes, do a reapproval. Just do it, yeah, just do a reapproval.
I'm sorry.
Well, no, it's, it, it, I'm sorry, reapproval, but it gives him three months. It gives him three months from this date.
Okay.
So he'll give it to February. That's all, that'll be.
So may I move that we issue a reapproval instead of an extension?
Yeah.
And, and to February, we have a.
It'll be February, um.
Three months.
Yeah, three months.
Three months? We have a date in February?
Thirteen, February thirteenth.
February thirteenth, okay.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, okay.
That's all right.
Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. Pose abstentions, extensions, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. So Teresa, we have, you're distributing a.
Yes, so there are two referrals from the town board. Um, I'm sending, I'm giving you the packets that have both referrals. Uh, the one referral, as it relates to the multifamily planned residential districts, is relatively easy to digest, and we can act on that this evening. Um, the other referral relates to the repeal of the Affordable Housing Overlay District and then replacement with a community housing overlay district. So, um, with respect to the, uh, MFPRD, the current code says they have a one-year, um, expiration date, or, I'm sorry, eighteen-month expiration date from the approval of the subdivision, uh, the PRD. And, um, obviously, getting through the Health Department and getting a building permit in eighteen months is very difficult. So the code amendment is to allow for the expiration to be three years from the date of approval with up to two one-year extensions.
So that's number twenty-eight you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I have that resolution here, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Can you just re-articulate what this is? Because you said words and then you used an acronym, and I want to understand.
MFPRD is the Multifamily Planned Residential District. For example, the most recent one that we've approved was NRP Group.
Okay.
Okay?
That's, that's number twenty-eight, Gloria.
Particularly when you're trying to get funding and you're trying to get through the Health Department, that's all a long process to get through that final process. And so we are, uh, the code is looking to amend, be amended to allow for a more lenient and reasonable timeframe than eighteen months.
Thank you for the explanation.
Absolutely.
So you've drafted something?
Yes, I drafted a resolution recommending adoption of the, the legislation, um, as it provides a more reasonable timeframe.
Great.
Any questions? We need two different actions for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or are we just?
Yeah, they're separate items, yeah. So we're working on twenty-eight now. And a motion.
I'll move to support.
Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. Pose abstentions, six in favor and one absent. And now twenty-seven, you're just distributing.
I'm just distributing. Again, um, it's a repeal of the Affordable Housing Overlay District and replacement with the Community Housing Overlay District requirements. Um, basically, you would land, uh, additional affordable housing in coordination and conjunction with community housing funding. And there's a whole mechanism that lays out what that process is to get both of those approvals at the town board level. Um, and, uh, again, just to review and, you know, distribute and review, and then we'll bring it to the board next meeting for your consideration for adoption. Um, Claire helped write the, the code, so if you have any questions, you can give me a call or Claire a co, a call, and we could walk you through some of that.
We can't have any more time?
No, scheduled for a public hearing for.
First week in December, right?
Yeah, first week in December.
Which is like the fourth or the fifth.
It's before your December.
December eleventh.
Yeah.
So again, it's Affordable Housing Overlay District. You can go right now to the town board and request it be landed on a piece of property, and they do their whole process, right? This new code requirement says it goes to the Community Housing Office in coordination with, uh, land management and some other agencies, uh, internally, and will, a recommendation is made to the town board to say, yes, let's move forward through that process of landing it, but, but with community housing funds. Um, but it's all outlined there.
So the legislative intent is pretty clear, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly. And this is not meant for solving all the affordable housing problems in one project. These are like smaller projects.
What happens if an applicant comes in with their own financing, like the Mariner?
They'd have to use the MFPRD.
Okay.
Or, or, or seek MF forty-four, cause zone change.
And does this impact the role of the planning board in this process?
You would get a referral similar to what you're doing, uh, now.
Yeah, you, that's town law, because you're landing a zone, yeah.
So, um, does this also make the code consistent with the authorization of the Community Housing Fund and the plan that was applied, and then the code follows, right?
Yeah, and it's so funny, I think the town board was realizing that, you know, they're, they're approving this fund because it's a good project, but they didn't start the other pro, part of the zoning landing.
Right, which is like Community Housing Fund has authorized the plan.
This puts it together, so they're not looking at it both in a, right?
Maybe more efficient.
Right.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe, more efficient. And then you be a more, now you know the funding's being involved in a project that's coming through when you get the referral. Yeah.
Okay, we'll read it. If we have questions, we'll email you, and we'll get ready for.
Definitely, give me a call, you know, whatever.
The twentieth, yeah.
It, it's a short time period, because we have to do it next week. And I'll put something together, too, and maybe send it to you on Tuesday. Just to give you, because I know about it, I can give you the, some background information.
You can give us, in, in layman's words, as opposed to.
Yeah.
The code.
The code, yeah.
On top of everything else.
Yep.
Okay, so we have one more, right? Thank you, Teresa. We have Mariner Housing, number twenty-nine.
We were going to try to squeeze it in last time, and we didn't get a chance to.
Okay, read.
Here.
Well, this is our report to the town board, yeah.
This is the report to the town board. So we had spoken about this a couple times. The applicant came in, of course, for a work session that was super helpful. That was September eleventh. Um, we talked about it again on October ninth. Um, and, uh, we didn't talk about October twenty-third. It was, the, the date now is November thirteenth. We were supposed to talk about it at the last meeting, but we didn't have time. So this is going to be today's date. So do you want me to just read it?
Yes.
Okay.
This is from our discussions, right?
This is from your discussions, and let me know if you, um, you know, write up your notes.
Yeah.
Let me know if I forgot anything, of course. Plan Board supports the initiative for affordable housing development that helps address the town's long-term planning goals by increasing the housing supply and providing diverse housing options. However, the Plan Board finds that the proposal is a significant development and is concerned with the potential environmental and cumulative impacts the project may have. The subject property is located in the Aquifer Tecton Overlay District, was created to protect the town's sole source aquifer from contamination by regulating land use in the water catchment areas. Further, CR two hundred zoning district was established to preserve large open spaces, maintain the town's rural character, and protect resources. By mainly, by mandating large size lots, the CR two hundred zoning limits develop mint density and helps ensure that the town's unique ecological and scenic qualities are preserved. Therefore, the project's potential environmental impacts must be carefully assessed before approval is granted. Secret concerns include traffic, access, cross-access, groundwater sewer treatment, APOD clearing, appearance of buildings, slopes, public water pressure issues, and cumulative impacts.
Really, that, I think that covers what we talked about, yeah, environmentally.
Yep. The Plan Board is concerned with the precedent of the project, as well as the cumulative impacts, while concerned with other similar developments. Therefore, the Plan Board finds that assessing the cumulative impacts of this action will be crucial to evaluating all the project's potential impacts. The goal is to prevent significant negative effects that could be overlooked when only looking at the project individually or by neglecting to consider the potential precedent that may be established. While the town's housing needs must be addressed, high-density development must also be carefully scrutinized to ensure that fundamental quality of life issues like noise, overcrowding, and lack of green space, as well as the stress on public services such as healthcare and education are not compromised. The Plan Board recommends that a comprehensive study be undertaken of remaining lands available in locations that could potentially accommodate high-density residential development for workforce housing. This analysis is crucial for long-term planning, assessing infrastructure needs, and testing the effectiveness of current land use regulations, which has been amended over the years to provide opportunities for affordable housing. The recommendation is found in the context of the Southampton Housing Plan and related comprehensive planning documents. The goal is to identify reasonable and realistic opportunities for development as limited suitable sites for mid-to-high-density residential construction, where a primary challenge identified in previous studies. The town Plan Board recommends incorporating sustainable green design elements to the site plan, including but not limited to rooftop solar panels, electric vehicle charging stations. including but not limited to rooftops, solar panels, electric vehicle charging stations, grass pavers, pervious surfaces. I don't really like that word pervious, it's permeable. Green storm water management by retention swales and lead certification of buildings. Generally, the number of recommended charging stations are one for every 20 parking space stalls, inclusive of land banking parking spaces.
So that's kind of specific.
Can I add to that last thing? Because it's kind of maybe to also incorporate native vegetation and landscaping to reduce water use.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
So we've had a lot of community input on this. And I think that number one and number two reflect it, Claire, was well-written.
Thank you, Anthony Humpy.
Thank you, very good.
I cheated.
Anthony Humpy.
Can I ask, where we say on the second page, the first bullet? Comprehensive study of the remaining lands available. Like, that kind of leaves me hanging. Remaining, you mean not already preserved by CPF?
Like, you know, two acres or whatever. This is obviously, I have this question.
I was referring to like when we were talking about this, we were talking about a code analysis and a map that highlighted the areas like we did for BESS, like based on the constraints of the code and the, you know, reasonable analysis. Here's the sites that are available. And so I think that's what that was referring to. Maybe you could adjust the language so it's more clear saying, you know, a visualization of sites that are available for affordable housing.
Something, you know, like?
And prioritizing, maybe?
So we don't have like?
Phrases that are already zoned for, you know, housing or nothing, just?
Well, next door, right? There's another large piece next door.
Right.
There was the?
There's a sign for sale there.
And that's CR 200? CR 200 as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or, you know, a large vacant parcel that, you know, this can't be just in a vac, there should be some background.
Should be a master plan.
Master plan.
Absolutely.
Also, we have to talk about the size. We're not looking for every lot where a four or a six unit. It's got to be, what, 24 and above or something?
I mean, that's, a smaller development is where that community housing overlay district fits, I think. This is something that's much bigger. And traditionally, communities are not happy with these larger, larger, for sure.
Right.
Yes.
And so?
So maybe you can weave into the language of looking for alternative sites or doing a master plan that to accommodate smaller?
That's what the comprehensive study reference is.
But maybe you can just say those words so that if they don't know what that study is?
It might be confusing by trying to clarify it, you know. Remain, I mean, could you find a piece of, you know, land zone light industrial and say, oh, this should be affordable housing, you know? That's where, you know, parkland, well, we know we're not going to touch parkland. We're not going to touch CPF. You know, I was just trying to put some kind of handle on it. But maybe just keeping it that way is fine.
Or proposing smaller, a small, smaller development's not large. I mean, it's certainly probably from a builder's standpoint, a lot more economical to put 24 or 32 houses in as opposed to doing more campus-style buildings or doing little communities that have 12 units, which are much more acceptable, I think, to communities in general.
Yeah, than the larger ones, right. And how do you protect, how do you protect another project next door? As you say, the land is for sale next door. Is there a way to protect that? To say that, okay, we're approving one?
Well, it's zoned, the protection is the zoning. It's R 200, and R 200 does not support this kind of development.
Okay.
And you've got another piece of property adjacent, not adjacent, but very close to this application with a big sign on it. Beautiful, big sign like this big about a really wonderful development opportunity.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, somebody else could come in.
And it's R 200 because it's Aqua Fair Protection Overlay District.
Yeah, so that, that helps.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's your suggestion, which I took from meeting. That this shouldn't be, this is, you're commenting on this project, but you're commenting overall, maybe there should be some sort of study.
Yes.
Right, so my trying to like frame it in my mind may be actually limiting it. And we don't want to limit it. Just leave it at remaining lands and let that be open to interpretation. And with so much thought going into affordable housing, then somebody has to do a master plan or think about a master plan.
Well, there's a new master plan supposedly being worked on. I don't know where we stand on that. I haven't seen anything in a while.
Very early.
The town also, I don't know of any recent ones, but when there was a lot of activity in a certain area, I used to do generic environmental impact statement to just sort of look at the whole area. And North Sea is very attractive because it's, you know, in a working community. There's proximity to SYS, which is great. But then you also have the Aqua Fair Protection Overlay District. So, and, you know, it's east of the canal so people can get further east for, you know, so I'm not suggesting that we go there, but and maybe more of an analysis of, you know, how much activity is going on in this area and not having it sit in vacuum.
It goes back to the Hamlet studies, you know? I don't know when those Hamlet studies were done. They're probably outdated.
Sure. Oh, they were all, well, some of them were done piecemeal, right? And some of them were in the 1999 comprehensive plan, so.
So, I mean, but you look at Hamlet by Hamlet. How many affordable units has that Hamlet absorbed? Move to the next one and just make some kind of general comparative. You need, we need a blueprint, really.
And it started with the housing plan. You know, it started with the housing plan, but that's pretty basic.
Yeah.
There's more information that needs to be put in there, so.
So this will end up being kind of like a working group, I would think, similar to the BESS working group where you bring different people in and, you know?
Figure out really where things should go.
Well, yeah, well, where things can go, but also where things are as well, right?
Right.
Get over the whole thing about five big developments and, you know, within a real proximity of each area. So we need an assessment of what's available, also an assessment of what's already there to avoid overcrowding in any one area. As an inventory of all these things that we approved that we know because we've approved it, but anybody else can say, well, you know, there's already two large developments, there should be another one. And major parts is kind of, you know, some of those are really seeing that, you're seeing a lot of comments on those things.
Yeah, it burdens those communities.
Upgrade the GIS system to provide visualizations of targeted activities that would help us make better decisions outside of a vacuum. I mean, that exists.
Is the technology getting upgraded?
Well, GIS is great. I mean, they're a great tool. I mean, we ask them for maps every day and they provide it, you know? We definitely do this, so.
And we had talked about having a session with Cara Bach to?
Right.
Kind of, you know, bring us all up to speed on where we are with the community housing. Having her in to talk would be?
Yeah, it'd be good.
So related to this, I think you did a great job capturing our feedback on the report. I feel comfortable with it.
We still need to vote on a?
We need to adopt this referral.
Ask at hand.
So can I have a motion? Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor. Post abstention, six in favor and one absent. I think we've done it. All right? So a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor. Post abstention, six in favor, one absent. And we are adjourned until 6 o'clock tonight. And what do we have tonight? We have two items?